Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on June 28th at 5:00 PM. First on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans. And tonight we have two items on consent. They're GMPs, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Powell to give us a brief review of that. And we have covered this with the Finance and Accountability Committee as well.
Good evening, President Solans, board members. Dr. Cavassos, there are two items on the consent agendas. They are guaranteed maximum price recommendations on two of our construction projects. We have reviewed these with the Board Finance Committee, and we recommend approval as presented.
Thank you. If there were trustees with questions, you can raise your hand so I can see you. Mr. Hibbs, do you have anything to add with the -- as the chair?
No, I just move that we move on the recommendations of the administration on these GMPs.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Dr. Raj. No trustees indicating that they wanted any of these items drawn and considered separately, and no indication of any further vote. Would you please vote by raising your right hand if you -- for affirmative. We'll start that. I can't see all the way down. Could someone confirm the vote for me? All trustees vote in affirmative. Thank you very much. And next on our agenda, we will move into a closed meeting, adjournment to closed meeting pursuant to Sections 551.071, consultation with attorney to seek and receive legal advice; 551.072, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate, real property; and 551.074, consider the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employed or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee of the Texas Government Code. Thank you. The time is 5:03. Thank you. The time is 5:40. We are back in open meeting. No action was taken in closed meeting. This meeting will come to order. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is convened on June 28, 2016. We're a meeting to consider the proposed term contract nonrenewal of Pamela Jefferson, who is presently employed with the district. The following board members are present: Louis Hogg, Holly Walton, Kisha Mays, Erin Raj, Jamie Solans, Kristen Hudson, John Hibbs. I am Jamie Solans, and for the record, a forum is present. Dennis Eichbaum will conduct this portion of the meeting for the board. Mr. Eichbaum will rule on all evidence and objections. Even though he is charged with making those rulings, Mr. Eichbaum is ultimately acting in the name of the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees may overrule any ruling. If any board member wishes to discuss or move to overrule a ruling by addressing the board president anytime, asking for clarification or discussion of such ruling, the Board of Trustees does not defer its authority in this or any matter to Mr. Eichbaum, and he will not have any vote in the board's final decision, but may assist the board in his legal capacity if there are no objections. I now turn this hearing over to Dennis Eichbaum.
Thank you. And will counsel for the district, please state your name, whether you're a licensed attorney, and introduce everyone at your table.
I'm Andrea Mooney. I am a licensed attorney in the state of Texas. To my left is Claudia Morales, T.S.G.A. representative. And next to her is Scott Thomas.
All right. And will the representative for the employee, please state your name, whether you're a licensed attorney, and introduce everyone at your table.
Sure. My name is Daniel Ortiz. I'm licensed to law. Pamela Jefferson is here with me to my right, and Sandra Hudson, next to her, T.S.G.A. representative, and Gianna Ortiz, also licensed, practitioner in my own.
All right. Thank you. And I would remind you that the microphones are here to pick this up, but if you could speak nice and loud to the board to hear you. This is being recorded, of course. All right. The other thing which you all have already done, and that is that you don't have to stand for your presentations, so please feel free to keep your seats. The hearing will be closed to the public in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code and Texas Education Code, Section 21.207A, unless the employee requests a public hearing. Does the employee wish the hearing to be open to the public?
If Ms. Jefferson requests that this hearing be open and that the board deliberate all open session.
All right. Well, we'll address deliberation at the end of the hearing. Thank you. I will now ask each member of the board whether he or she is able to serve as an impartial member of this hearing body and to arrive at a decision based solely upon evidence presented at this hearing. Any member not able to act in such a manner may say so and ask to be excused. Is there anyone who wishes to recuse themselves for this hearing? All right. Hearing none. I will now instruct the parties on the procedures to be followed during this hearing. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with the district's policy governing nonrenewal of term contracts. The administration's representative will present evidence to establish the reasons for the proposed nonrenewal. The employee's representative may then present evidence in support of the employee. Both sides may present witnesses and documentary evidence and may cross-examine witnesses offered by the other side. Does either party wish to invoke the rule, that is, to remove all witnesses from the hearing room until they are called to testify?
Ms. Jefferson, go.
All right. Seeing that the rule has been invoked, do either of you have witnesses here other than your representatives, Ms. Jefferson and Ms. Morales, that are in the room at this time?
The administration has --
All right. Then I'm going to instruct the witness at this time, Ms. Fielding. The rule has been invoked, and what that means is that witnesses are not supposed to be able to hear each other testify. Therefore, we're going to ask you to go to another room, and we'll find a room for you. And we will call on you when it's your turn to testify. You are welcome during any break to talk to either attorney if you wish. You don't have to, but do not ask anyone, any witness in this case, what they've heard or anyone else, what they've heard and what kind of testimony has gone on. So you're not required to talk to anyone, but if you choose to, don't talk to them about this hearing until you've been released from the rule. Do you understand? All right. Then at this time, we will ask you to step out. Board members sit -- do we have any other witnesses? Okay. Board members sit as a panel of judges and are to remain impartial. Board members will not be questioned by representatives or witnesses. The rules for this hearing are as follows. Only one person talks at a time, and we don't interrupt the person who's talking. This is for multiple reasons. One, common courtesy, but also because the court reporter can only take down one person at a time. Objections will be addressed to me for my decision. The representatives are not to argue directly with each other. Those who are observing in the audience may not talk or in any way interrupt the proceedings. Any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience will result in his or her expulsion from the hearing room. The hearing participants should conduct themselves with common courtesy and respect for the rights of others. Unduly repetitious or irrelevant testimony will be ruled out of order either upon the objection of either party or by my own motion. While this hearing is not a formal court of law, I will rule on evidentiary objections to the best of my ability based upon the Texas Rules of Evidence and taking into consideration the Commissioner of Education's rules about hearsay in nonrenewal hearing. This hearing will be timed, limited in time. The employee will be afforded 90 minutes to present her case. The administration will likewise be afforded 90 minutes. Cross-examination will be counted against both parties allotted time. You'll be informed as to when you're getting close to your allotted time, and if you have any concerns about that amount of time, we can address it at that juncture. To provide the most accurate record possible, the court reporter's transcript of the proceeding is being made. Please avoid talking, again, when others are speaking so that the court reporter's transcript will reflect the proceedings accurately. I'm going to appoint the court reporter, who is a notary public -- are you a notary public? Okay. Nonetheless, I'm still going to appoint you to swear in all witnesses and receive any label, all exhibits, and documentary evidence. Before we swear in the witnesses, let me confirm that the evidence that you have provided me, and that would be the administration's Exhibits 1 through 27, and Ms. Jefferson's 1A through the number 13 with many subparts, is all the evidence, documentary evidence that's going to be presented during this hearing? Is that correct?
Yes, as far as I'm known.
Okay. Is there any objection by either party with regard to the introduction of this evidence at this time in order to streamline the proceeding?
That's due, or it's not effect, various statements, basically not. I have the court of law said, I don't -- why does that all -- that's part?
Ms. Ortiz?
The only objections Ms. Jefferson has is with respect to school districts Exhibit Number 5, Jefferson's 2015 term contract, and the reason for this objection is that employee did not sign. Secondly, with respect to Exhibit 24, the only two objections we have are with respect to Exhibit 5 and to 24. With respect to Exhibit 24, we object that Ms. Jefferson asked for, and this honorable board's given her an opening. And as I stated earlier, that Ms. Jefferson shall ask at the appropriate time that the board deliberate, deliberate this matter, Ian Olvis, that school district administration did not provide me this audio tape upon information and belief. Understand, at least four of the five audio recordings contain names of students, and I suggest, and I suggest strongly, that this board runs the risk of violating FERPA to play these tapes in open session.
All right. Please.
He's the FER council subject to signing. Because of that, I also provided not copy of this to be looked for. That's building final, there was obviously opportunity, was often for listening to it, had to start. That's -- thank you. So that's the reason why he's saying that he didn't get a copy of it. And the other part of it is, my understanding is the board has had these proposed exhibits from both sides for a while and has had the opportunity to listen to them. And while I think deliberations can be requested to be heard in public, I think if there's any listening to student information, that should certainly be closed, and if the board requests we do that tonight, we could certainly close for that. I think that's provided for in the law. And so that's my response.
All right. Ms. Ortiz, let me start with Exhibit 5, which is the term contract. Are you saying that this term contract is any different than the one that she would have signed or electronically signed?
I'm not sure. I have personal knowledge of that.
Okay. We'll take that objection under advisement at this time. Let's turn to Exhibit 24. Were you given the opportunity to review the tape?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But my primary objection is regarding FERPA.
I understand that.
And the council's correct. She off that I go to the administration building and listen to that, that I did not hear her address the issue that at least four of the five audio -- that four of the five audio recordings contain students' names.
Okay.
And just like your rules that you stated at the outset of this matter, that this board should consider evidence and only the evidence presented tonight, not yesterday, not five days ago, but tonight. So I would hope that the board, if the boards listen to these audio recordings, will not consider that in their deliberations. Secondly, I don't know a way around FERPA and school districts that wrestle with it every day of the week, as they should.
Yep.
And I know of no provision that would allow this board, after we've asked it to be heard in open session, and after we've asked that the board deliberate in open session, I don't see an opportunity to lawfully consider these tapes because of FERPA.
All right. I will address that at this time. School boards are permitted to go into closed session with regard to anything that would be federally protected, like FERPA, for the purposes of just that portion, to listen, as an example, to listen to the tapes. And the reason for that is because the Open Meetings Act is state law, FERPA is federal law, therefore it supersedes the requirement for the open meeting just for the purpose of listening to the tapes. So at the end of the hearing, when we are done with the hearing and the presentation of evidence, the board will have the opportunity at that time, if it chooses to go into closed session, to listen to all or any portion of the tapes that it deems it wishes to listen. So we will address that at that time. All right.
And Mr. Eichbaum, in that event, that the board does choose, do as you suggest. That will adjust. And then, with alternatives, we would ask that we be privileged to be able to listen to the tape as well, wrong, this is not a renewal hearing, and if it's a nonrenewal of my time.
Well, I think you were given the opportunity, you indicated. So as far as whether or not you won't listen with the board, but if the board chooses to listen, you're welcome to go and listen to it at the same time. That's fine. All right. So at this time, I'm going to introduce into evidence and accept into evidence Exhibits 1 through 27, with the two objections noted and taken under advisement by Ms. Ortiz, as well as Jefferson Exhibits 1A through 13. They are now in evidence, and neither party needs to spend time proving them up. All right. Then the witnesses who are currently present, if you would stand at this time and be sworn All right. Thank you. And we will swear the other witness in when she comes back in. The letter notifying the employee of the proposed nonrenewal identifies the following reasons for the proposed action, and they are found in Exhibit 1 of the administration. Number 1, deficiencies pointed out in observations, appraisals, or evaluations, supplemental memoranda, or other communications. Number 2, failure to fulfill duties or responsibilities. 3, incompetency or inefficiency in the performance of duties, and going by the policy number. 5, insubordination or failure to comply with official directives. 6, failure to comply with board policies or administrative regulations. 15, failure to meet the district's standards of professional conduct. 22, failure to maintain an effective working relationship or maintain good rapport with parents, the community, or colleagues. Number 24, behavior that presents a danger or physical harm to a student or to other individuals. And number 35, any reason constituting good cause for terminating the contract during its term. That letter also -- yes?
I'm sorry. The numbers that I have didn't follow the number they stated. You said the numbers were supposed to follow the policy?
Thank you. I see where I left out number 20, and number 24 is different.
And you added number 6.
That's correct. All right. Let me reread them. I apologize. Deficiencies pointed out in observation reports, appraisals, or evaluations, supplemental memorandum, or other communications. 2, failure to fulfill duties or responsibilities. 3, incompetency or inefficiency in the performance of duties. 5, insubordination or failure to comply with official directives. 15, failure to meet the district's standards of professional conduct. 18, failure to comply with reasonable district requirements regarding advanced coursework or professional improvement and growth. 20, any activity, school-connected or otherwise, that because of the publicity given it or knowledge of it among students, faculty, and community, impairs or diminishes the employee's effectiveness in the district. 22, failure to maintain an effective working relationship or maintain good rapport with parents, the community, or colleagues. And 35, any reason constituting good cause for terminating the contract during its term. The specific reasons include, but are not limited to, repeated unprofessional behavior, being placed on a counselor in needs of assistance plan on November 13, 2015, being placed on a counselor in needs of assistance plan on December 2, 2014, similar reason, being placed on a professional growth plan on January 20, 2016, failure to successfully complete your growth and/or intervention plan, failure to address a concern regarding a student that was in crisis, unprofessional and disrespectful conduct towards your colleagues and supervisors, failing to follow proper procedures for leaving the campus, and talking in a condescending manner and unprofessional tone with your colleagues and/or supervisor. Are there any questions before we begin? All right. Then at this time, the administration may now present its case.
We have opening statements.
How long would each of you like for opening statements?
Three minutes.
All right. We'll give you each three minutes. That's fine.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam President, for being here tonight to consider a very important issue, and that is the nonrenewal of the contract of Ms. Pamela Jefferson, who's currently the counselor at Lynn Hale Elementary. Now, like Mr. Eichbaum just listed off, the administration has asserted nine grounds for justifying Ms. Jefferson's nonrenewal. Nine grounds, and specifics beyond that, and you'll hear more specifics tonight, and you'll see specifics even more so to a greater extent in our exhibits, all supporting those nine grounds. You'll hear ample evidence that all nine grounds are warranted in supporting Ms. Jefferson's nonrenewal. However, under policy DFBB legal, the administration is only required to prove one, and we're only required to prove one by a preponderance of the evidence. So that means 51% of the evidence, that's preponderance, has to support one of our nine grounds for termination. So that's a low burden for the administration to meet. But beyond those legalities, and what's a lot more important, is what's at stake here? And what you'll hear in the testimony is that what is at stake here is students who are very young from a school district or a school that has a lot of social-emotional issues, students with a lot of social-emotional issues, and some behavioral issues, and they're a very high-needs district. They are in need of counseling services, and they are in need of a counselor who is committed to providing them the quality of counseling services that we, as a district, can be proud of, that we can stand behind, and that these children are entitled to. I think the evidence, I know the evidence will show, that that has not been occurring since Ms. Jefferson has been counselor. And so that's the critical issue here, beyond just the grounds and the legalities, is the crux of the issue is the children and whether they are getting the services that they need. I think you're going to hear a lot of distractions and detracting from the real issues tonight, a lot of finger-pointing, and, well, if you think my conduct was bad, wait till you hear what this guy did. Remember why we're here. We're here to talk about the nonrenewal of Ms. Jefferson. No one else is here to be determined whether their contract is renewed. And so all of those are red herrings, and they're distractions. And so, as I said, you'll hear evidence supporting all nine grounds. We only have to prove one, and that's why we're here tonight. We have that evidence, and that's why we're asking for you to vote in support of the nonrenewal of Ms. Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ortiz, would you like to do your opening statement now or before your case begins?
No.
Thank you.
Let me stand, because I can stand for you, I can stand longer, and I'm standing out of respect for my client, his honor. My first opportunity to appear before the board, you all know. I agree. This is a serious matter. I think the lawyers in this room can agree, a nonrenewal that in the employment sector, in the educational sector, there's like a termination. Every application of employment adds. Ever been nonrenewed? Ever been proposed for nonrenewal? Like a termination. It's a death. This is it. And so you ask, why are we here? If it's so serious, why is she contesting this? Simple. That Ms. Jefferson is a single, three full-aged children, sobered, and that if nothing else she has, she has principal. And she asks, because no one has asked before, if you hear her side. I don't know about finger-pointing. I don't know about distraction. We're going to try to give our side. And our side is, I think, substantial. I think once you listen to the evidence and read the affidavit, read the affidavit, you're the judge and the trier of fact. You're trained by, of course, the [inaudible]. And don't just affirm administration's recommendation. Don't do that. That's not fair enough, because it's too serious. This is not a agreement. It's just like a termination. You don't have termination, but hold on. But different fact. I submit to you, this is nothing more than a personality conflict between my client and the building principal. All the affidavits, look at them. They're all subordinates of principal, and they all say the same thing. From day one, we couldn't get along with them. Gosh. That you'll hear her talk about her love. She began teaching here in Yostick Road seven school year, and a promoted school counselor in 13, 14 school year, same school year principal, arriving. And from day one, principal starts saying, everybody doesn't like you. You don't get along with anybody. Don't nonrenew based upon personality. This is too serious. Listen to all the evidence, and you decide, and you decide whether or not that there's sufficient evidence to fire. I see.
Thank you. All right. At this time, the administration may call its first witness.
The administration would like to call Pamela Jefferson.
Pam, make sure to speak up.
If you would bring the microphone towards you, let me remind you that you're under oath.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Can you please state your name?
Pamela Renee Jefferson.
And your counsel just mentioned that you're the counselor--
Ms. Mooney, could you speak up?
Yes. Your counsel just mentioned that you're the counselor at Lynn Hale, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And before that, you were a teacher beginning in '07, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
At Hedgeson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask you to find her on your table, that's your picture that your counsel submitted, to turn to Exhibit 5I. submitted, to turn to exhibit five I. Now, you wrote a rebuttal to every, to every reprimand that you received, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you wrote a rebuttal to every affidavit that the administration submitted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this is rebuttal to your reprimand, your first reprimand that you received during the 13, 14 school year when you first came to Lynn Hale, correct? And this is five I. This is from yours, from your notebook.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this was in reference to, that you were late for the STAR testing, correct?
Not for the STAR testing. In the morning times, we hand out the material for STAR testing. I was about 10 minutes late for the material handout.
Okay, and you're the, at your school, you're the director of testing, correct?
The coordinator of testing, yes, ma'am.
Coordinator of testing. Okay, so what time does school start?
At 8:05.
Okay, and what time did you show up this day?
About 8:15.
Okay. And so, did you immediately tell, well, before you got to school, did you tell your principal that you were going to be late?
No, ma'am, I did not.
And did you tell anyone?
Yes, I contacted my guidance tech and let her know that I would be late, and to tell Ms. Morales, because Ms., her name is also Ms. Morales, but her first name is Diana, and she's normally the first person at the school.
Did you have Ms. Morales's cell phone number?
At the time, I did not.
Okay, she provides it, though, to all of her employees, correct?
I'm not sure if she does, but at the time, I didn't have her cellphone.
And you had her email address?
I did have her email address, yes, ma'am.
So, when you came in, you went and you started doing your duties, and the first time you talked to Ms. Morales to let her know why you were tardy was when you wrote her an email at around 9:20, correct?
When I came to the office, Ms. Morales and my guidance tech, Ms. Morales, were standing at the door. So she saw me arrive to the room at the time that I arrived, and I said good morning to her.
But you didn't tell her that you were late, or why you were late until 9:20 when you emailed her, correct?
I can't remember.
Okay. If you'll turn to page three of your statement that you wrote, and at the bottom, can you read what that says?
Around 9:20 and 49 seconds a.m., I sent Ms. Morales a reply email message indicating to her the reason for my tardiness, which is shown below.
I'm sorry, can we-
I'm lost. Five I?
Yeah.
The bottom of page, your page three? So that was the first time that you let your administrator know that you were late for STAR testing?
Now that I see it in writing, yes, ma'am.
And, so you also told Ms. Morales at that time that it was okay that you were late, because she's also certified to give testing, correct?
No, ma'am, I didn't tell her that it was okay that I was late, and that she's certified to give testing. What I informed her was is that she made the statement that although Diana Morales is great, I need to be here on time. And I said to her, as if there was a problem to occur, having been over testing, she could have assisted her in my tardiness.
So do you think that's acceptable, to tell your supervisor that you could have assisted, you know, if I was, just because I was, you know, I was late, that you could have assisted?
Not in which the way you just spoke. It was sent with the meaning that if there was something to happen, you could have assisted her while I was gone.
And you also told her that to you, family comes first, and if she doesn't understand that, then she has a problem, correct?
Well, that was after she stated to me, as a parent, you should do this and that.
What did she say you should do as a parent?
Not her direct quote, because it's been a while, but she was saying, as a parent, I should have got my kid up on time and made sure that she didn't miss the bus, and-
Do you disagree with that on STAR testing day?
Excuse me?
Do you disagree with, that you should have done that on STAR testing day?
But I did wake my daughter up, that's what I was explaining to her. Why she missed the bus, I don't know.
And wasn't it Ms. Morales's problem, not so much that you put your family first, but maybe that the Arlington ISD students didn't have a testing coordinator there when the school day began?
As I stated before, the test did not start. This test normally starts around 9:00 a.m., so I'm not sure.
The school day starts at 8:05, though, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't think that you need to be there before the test actually begins?
This was an unplanned occurrence, so I was not expecting to be late, ma'am.
So, but then you also told her, hey, I also have to leave early today, which was still STAR testing day, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The STAR test, because it was only fifth grade science, and I believe it's like a three-hour test, so the testing would have been over by the time that I was requesting to leave.
And there's never any unforeseen issues that occur that maybe a testing director would need to be there for, or a testing coordinator would need to be there for?
I'm not sure, because it's unforeseen.
Right, so there could be, you're saying it's possible there could be unforeseen issues that would require your presence?
I'm not for sure if it would occur or not.
And you also said you needed to leave the next day, which was also a STAR testing day, early for your daughter's birthday by 1:00, correct?
I would have to look at the actual dates to see what I said.
You don't recall saying that you needed to leave early for your daughter's birthday?
I did request to leave, but it was after the STAR test has been completed, and I was relieved of my testing coordinator duties.
Aside from unforeseen issues which you could not foresee, correct?
Well, I wasn't going to leave until it was totally finished, because we have to pack up and take the stuff to the testing office, and I have to be there for that.
Did you know about your daughter's birthday before the day before?
Once again, I would need to see the dates to see if it was actually the date of a STAR testing date.
So do you think that it's professional to tell your supervisor that she has a problem?
As it relates to the conversation that we had, for her to tell me as a parent what I needed to do, and to explain to her that if my kid missed the bus, I have to take her to school.
Okay, I'm going to object, non-responsive.
Why don't you ask the question again?
Do you think that it's professional to tell your supervisor that she has a problem?
When it's relating to the statement that I stated to her, no, I don't.
Can you turn to the fourth to the last page, same exhibit? And do you see a paragraph, it's the first paragraph, full paragraph there that says, "When I first started on..." It's fourth to the end.
Fourth to the end, but you can't see the page at the bottom. The word disrespectful.
Starts with the word disrespectful. And the first full paragraph starts with "when I first." So it says, "When I first started on September 9, 2013, which has been about seven months on the job, I've been dealing with the clerk at the front desk, the secretary, the sped team leader, instructional coaches, and a few teachers who were not pleased with the scheduling of local assessments." Remember writing that?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's your position that Ms. Morales took their, took all of those people's side over yours, correct?
Could you repeat the question?
It's your position that everything that those people said about you was believed, and your response was not believed by Ms. Morales?
Relating to, ma'am?
Well, the next sentence you say, "In all cases, I've been accused, and not once has my side of the story been heard." So can we assume from that that Ms. Morales supposedly believed their side of the story and not yours?
I'm not sure if she believed what they said, but I would say that it was not, like, she didn't ask me my portion of the story.
So all seven of those people within the first, or all of those people, sorry, within the first seven months on the job had complaints about you, you say?
I don't know that, she never told me who those people were. This, this was written, as it stated, the clerk at the front desk, the secretary, the sped team leader, instructional coaches. So we will start with, I guess, the first three. That's because there was reprimands that stated that these people had made comments or whatnot.
Okay. So are you, is it your position that all of these people lied about what they said about you, and you were the one being truthful?
I can't say that they lied about what they told Ms. Morales. She never really told me, like, what they said, she always just said, "Everybody is saying it, and it must be true." The particular situations that I'm talking about in that particular paragraph is with me knowing that if something happened, not what she informed me of.
Now you all, who is Peggy Juarez?
She is the district director of testing.
And you've also documented in your responses that she said that you were disrespectful, and she was concerned that you were incapable of coordinating STAR testing. Do you recall writing that?
That's what Ms. Morales wrote on a reprimand.
Okay, so was Ms. Juarez, so Ms. Morales said that's what Ms. Juarez said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, was Ms. Juarez wasn't being accurate about you when she said that?
I was not being disrespectful, no, ma'am.
And can you please flip to your exhibit four A? Beginning in the middle of the page, so you wrote, is everyone there? I would say it would be a difference of opinions, opinion as to whether my behavior was aggressive or disrespectful. So it could be a difference of opinion. People could have differing opinions about whether your behavior was aggressive or disrespectful, correct?
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong exhibit.
Do you, do you follow where I am now?
Four, it's four A, and where is it located?
It's page four. Do you see where it says, in the middle of the page there, I would say it may be a difference of opinion as to whether my behavior was aggressive or disrespectful? Do you see that?
No, ma'am, I'm trying to find it.
Do you recall writing that?
I believe I wrote something to that effect.
Can you find it, Pam, find it?
Page four A?
Yeah, that's fine. It's exhibit four A, page four of that exhibit.
Okay. This is the rebuttal in the statement for Ms. Byers.
Right.
And on her statement, it says that I was aggressive and disrespectful. So I was responding to that statement from her.
So you and Ms. Byers may have a difference of opinion as to whether you were aggressive or disrespectful. You're not just saying you weren't, you're saying maybe there was a difference of opinion between us?
No, I am saying that I was not disrespectful, and I was responding to the statement, the affidavit from Ms. Byers.
You go on to say, "It was not my attempt to be disrespectful or aggressive, rather it was my need to refute the inconsistent accusations and claims made by Claudia Morales relating to my, as Kimberly Byers stated, shortcomings in my performance or attitude and failure to follow district protocols. Also noted in sworn affidavits of Pia Foster, Lisa Sharp, Brandon Holland, Emily Barone, Christine Ortiz Hernandez, Robert Fiorito, Hannah Phillips, and Elizabeth Butler Robbins." Correct? You wrote that?
Yes, ma'am, I did write that. Was there another question that you were asking?
The first question is, did you write it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the next question is, were all of those people being untruthful about you, about your shortcomings in performance, your poor attitude, and your failure to follow district protocols?
I'm not for sure if they were truthful, you would need to ask them. My rebuttals to what was given in the affidavit is my true intent, which was never to be disrespectful.
So contrary to what your counsel said earlier, Pia Foster, Lisa Sharp, and Brandon Holland are not under, are not under Ms. Morales's supervision, correct?
Could you repeat the question?
Pia Foster, Lisa Sharp, and Brandon Holland, Holland are not, well, Brandon Holland's is an administrator. Pia Foster and Lisa, Pia Foster and Kim Byers, I'm sorry, let me start over. Pia Foster and Kim Byers are not under Ms. Morales's supervision, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Holland is an assistant principal, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So not all these people are teachers who are saying this?
No, ma'am.
So let's move to the 2014-15 school year. So you received two reprimands, correct, on November 6th, the 14th? November 6, 2014? Is that correct?
I believe so, if this was indicated in my documentation.
And... There are several things asserted in here on exhibit 18, and this is the district's exhibit 18. This is one of the November 6, 2014 reprimands.
Mr. Eickelbaum?
Yes.
Can I ask both sides to be very clear about where they're looking in these documents, and give us time to find those before they proceed?
Absolutely. So instructive, thank you.
Exhibit 18 for the district. So, this was your, one of your reprimands, and the first thing that, one of the things that's addressed is that Ms. Ortiz Hernandez, one of the teachers, asked that you see her student for a counseling at the mother's request. Do you remember that request? That the student was getting in trouble, that he had been on 15 days' suspension, and for making threatening students, threatening comments to the teacher. Do you remember that?
Somewhat.
Okay, and that request was made to you on September the 23rd. Do you recall that?
I'm not sure with the dates, to be 100% for certain.
Okay, please flip to page 93, and the district does have, if you look at the bottom, it says AISD, that's the numbering that I'm referring to.
Okay.
Okay. So, Ms. Ortiz Hernandez says, "I turned in a parent consent form and requesting..."
What page are you on?
Page 93. And the requesting counseling, counseling form last Tuesday, September 23rd. Now what is the date of this email?
September 30.
Okay, so she said she hasn't heard from you, and that the parent has requested counseling, and she hadn't heard from you since she emailed you on, since she emailed you on the 23rd, correct?
That's what her statement says, yes, ma'am.
And flipping to page 94, you responded that day, and you said, "I have been very busy." That was part of what you said. And at the end there, you said- And at the end there, you said, "I'll try my very best to schedule a time to see him this week." Do you think it's acceptable to say that you didn't call in a student for a week or even respond to a referral for counseling for a week because you've been busy?
Um, I don't know that, that, that form was turned directly into me. Um, it could have been placed in my mailbox. I don't recall her giving me specifically the form.
So when you said absolutely in your email, that meant you didn't recall her giving you the form?
Absolutely meant that I could sit down and meet with her.
So now your position is that you don't remember getting the form, that you didn't get the form on the 23rd?
I, I can't recall.
Well, I'll, I'll give a little bit of leeway, but, uh, be cautious with the way you answer your question.
That's okay, I'll move on. Um, can you flip to your exhibit 5H? And y'all are gonna have to count, it's page seven. And that's by your, I mean, Ms. Jefferson's exhibit, 5H, page seven. It says, "My response." Ms. Morales, Mrs. Williams requested. Yeah. Am I there? Page seven. Is it page... It's page six? Okay, I'm sorry, I was trying to count. Is it page six? Okay, it starts with "My response." Mrs. Morales, does everyone see that? And at the bottom, it says A and C.
You there, Pam?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this was your response to that exhibit 18 reprimand, correct?
This is the response to reprimand number two. Is that the one you're speaking of?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
We were just talking about... Okay, so in A and C, you talk about this student that Ms. Ortiz Hernandez asked you about. And you said, "This particular student has behavior issues in which the teacher is frustrated and requested him to see me. District doesn't allow me to practice therapy or provide what the student may need beyond what I can offer." So in this email, the reason you couldn't see the student wasn't be... Or in this response, the reason you couldn't see the student wasn't because you were busy, it was because you can't provide a student with behavior issues therapy, correct?
Um, I am not sure what you're asking me.
Well, what I'm asking is, when you emailed Ms. Ortiz Hernandez, you said that you've been very busy and that's why you haven't seen the student yet. And now when we flip to your response, you're saying that you can't see the student because the student has behavior issues and the district doesn't let you practice therapy.
If I recall correctly, the first one, when I said that I was busy, it was due to academic checks. The district had incorporated an additional set of assessments, um, the 2014, 2015 school year, in addition to all the other assessments. Um, the scene in this, uh, rebuttal is saying that, um, I referred the student to UTA. So the first scene is that I wasn't able to see him during the day or whenever she requested. And the second one is the clarification is that whenever they have severe needs or there is a, something happened with the family, um, you normally refer them to UTA.
So it's district procedure. It's acceptable for the district to just refer a student to UTA and not provide in-house counseling services to a student?
When you say counseling service, what do you mean?
I mean, how, seeing the student for counseling.
Um, we see the student, um, to help with behaviors that we can handle according to the district's protocol. But if it's something that we feel as though that needs to be addressed with a licensed professional counselor, we refer them to UTA.
So there's no duty to have a partnership? So you're working with a student on campus and UTA is working with a student off campus?
Uh, you asked if there was a duty to have a partnership? Yes, I, I would love to see the student, um, and work on the things that I'm able to do within my, my school counselor license.
But in this particular case, you couldn't or wouldn't do that?
It states that his behavior issues and the things that's going on with his family is what caused him to be referred to UTA.
And you refer to that in your, in other parts of your exhibits, that students that had purely behavior issues and not social, emotional issues, that, that that was outside of your realm of expertise. Is, is that correct?
I don't believe, um, that I stated that. Um, what I want to make clear is, is that, um, as a school counselor, sometimes it's misunderstood that we perform therapy or, um, what would be in the realms of a licensed professional counselor. And so that's what I'm stating.
Okay, can you flip a couple pages forward to letter D? Your letter D. And the second sentence, you said, "This particular student, this particular issue is truly behavior for this student. He doesn't have any social or emotional issues and the administration wants me to meet with him." So if a student only has behavior issues, then you're not supposed to meet with them?
I'm sorry, I don't know which D. Is it 5D or?
It's your D from exhibit to exhibit we were just on.
The same page.
So we were just reading, I, paragraph AC. Next page goes to B.
Mm.
And then it's a D on the next page.
Paragraph D.
Paragraph D.
Where it starts with Mr. Holland called me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is for a different student?
Yeah, it's a different student, but this is an issue where you said, "The particular issue is truly behavior. He doesn't have any social or emotional issues and the administration wants me to meet with him."
Um, that's what I wrote, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you believe that if a student has behavior issues and not social or emotional issues, that you don't have a duty to meet with him?
I, I don't believe it. I, I believe that if, if there is a situation that warrants UTA, I should refer them.
So you just refer those students who maybe warrant UTA to UTA without counseling at school?
Um, not particularly licensed professional counseling. I'll go in and talk to them and talk about good choices and things that happened. This particular student, um, was a kindergarten and Mr. Holland called and asked me, "Could I give him, Ms. Sharp, a break?" And this particular student would not follow her directions. He would walk, run down the hall, he would, um, jump on the carpet. He would not follow her directions. So this was not that the student needed to see me. It was to give her a break from him not following her directions.
So in this situation where the student was having behavioral issues and in the issue where it was Ms. Ortiz Hernan... or Ms. Ortiz's student, where that student was having behavior issues, those students got referred out to UTA?
I've met with those students. Um, they've come to my office. I talked to them about making good choices, um, what could they have done differently? Um, but when it's introduced that from the family aspect, that there's something else going on, you have to refer the student to UTA.
If there's family issues and something else going on, you have to refer to UTA? And then you're, and you don't have any other further duty as a school counselor?
I do have a, a further duty as a school counselor. If they send them to me, I will see the student, I will talk to them about making good choices, yes, ma'am.
But no, no ongoing duty?
What do you mean? Like, could you explain? What do you mean, ongoing?
To see the student more than to bring him in and tell him to make good choices?
If the teacher requests me to see the student, I will see the student. Um, if you're asking me, say, this is in September and it's May and the teacher hadn't asked me to come see the student, if I see the student in the hallway, yes, I would ask them how they're doing or how, how it's going.
If you passed him in the hallway?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, and at the end of this paragraph D, you said, "When Mr. Holland contacted me, I was on lunch and I stated to him that I was, I would, I assumed, see the student when I got back. He kept insisting and I told him I will see students when I return from lunch. I believe I am granted lunch each day." I gra... I'm, I believe I am granted a lunch each day. So you don't think that as a counselor, you have any responsibility to leave your lunch? To see a student that perhaps could use your help?
Um, this particular student, he asked me to give her a break. He didn't say that the kid was in crisis. He didn't say that it was a, a, a behavior issue, a social, emotional issue, to give her a break.
A break because he had been removed from her class for being disruptive, correct?
Um, I don't know that he had been removed from her class.
And was, and you didn't know because you were at lunch and you didn't see the student?
Mr. Holland didn't inform me that. He just called and said, "Hey, can you give Ms. Sharp a break?"
And you thought that it was acceptable to tell your administrator, "I'm at lunch and I'll deal with it when I get back and I believe I'm granted a lunch."
I didn't, I didn't tell him that I believe I'm granted at lunch. That's what I wrote in my rebuttal.
Do you recall Mr. Holland asking you, "Can you tell me when you'll be back? Or when you'll be available, 30 minutes?" And, uh, you said, "Like I said, I'm at lunch." Do you recall telling him that?
Um, I know he asked me like, "What time did you go to lunch?" Or something like that.
Okay, and do you recall telling him, "Like I said, I'm at lunch"?
I did tell him I was at lunch, yes, ma'am.
Just want to let you know you've used 31 minutes at this point.
Thank you. So the next page under item F, this was a situation where, um, does everyone know what I'm looking at?
Paragraph F.
Paragraph F, sorry, I say number, it's not number. Paragraph F, thank you. Um, at the bottom of the page, this was an issue where a student was brought to you and you say, um, towards the bottom, beginning with, "The issue is that Mrs. Barong, as well as other teachers, believe that I am to see students who have behavior problems through lack of classroom management." So let's stop there. So regardless of the reason why the student's misbehaving, if the teacher's not exercising classroom management, you think that absolves you of your duty to counsel that student?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay, but that's not what you said here, is it? You said, "Ms. Barong's not exercising classroom management and it's unfair that I have to counsel this student."
Could you repeat the question?
I just asked, what you said here is that Ms. Barong's not exercising classroom management and that it was unfair that you had to counsel, counsel the student because of that, correct?
I don't believe my words were that it's unfair to counsel the students. Um, I absolutely would love to sit in my office all day and speak to kids. Um, that's why I became a counselor. So I don't want that to be misconstrued in any way. Um, the counseling responsibility on a campus is, is, is a lot, especially when testing is going on. Um, so around this time, testing was going on. Um, that's not an excuse, but that's something the district requires me to do, to be the testing coordinator and the school counselor all at once. So I'm not saying that it's unfair to ever see a student. I will still see a student.
Okay, can you read for the board beginning at, "This is unfair."
This is, "This is unfair. The assistant principal should handle behavior instead of placing it on me because they assume that I don't do work or their job is more demanding than mine." This is what they signed up for and I don't appreciate being threatened and made to attend a parent conference after school.
How are you was threatened?
Um, once again, I, this happened a long time ago. I hadn't read the whole paragraph, so we're only talking about bits and pieces. To answer your question correctly, I would have to read everything to give you a accurate answer.
Well, being threatened, isn't memorable to you?
Um, it is memorable, but a lot of things have happened. I've been through a lot of stress dealing with being placed on administrative leave and going through this non-renewal hearing process. So I may not recall everything.
And you don't appreciate being made to attend parent conferences after school? That's what you wrote, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's what's stated.
You don't think there's a situation, any situation as a counselor when you'd have a duty to maybe meet with a parent after school from time to time?
Yes, ma'am, I do feel that there is a time that that could occur. If I remember correctly, this particular student, I believe, um, I offered to meet during the day with the parent or the teachers also have a conference period, um, during the day to meet with the parent. So without looking at everything and just looking at certain pieces, I can't tell you for certain.
Well, what if the parent works two jobs and they can't come to school in the middle of the day? And their student really needs your services?
I don't believe that that was the situation.
Well, if that was the situation, would you make an exception?
Um, yes, ma'am, I would.
I'll let that one in. She's answered it.
Let's move to, uh, your exhibit 4D and it's page two. Mm-hmm. What's the first word? Um, "Explain to him..." Okay, and this is a student, second paragraph, um, involving Ms. Barong. And this is the same student that Ms. Barong asked you to meet with after school, correct? This was the situation, you said you didn't think that was a situation that the parent could only meet after school?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, do you recall this student where the father came to you and said that they're having serious family issues?
Yes, I do.
And on the very next page, in response to what Ms. Barong said in her affidavit, which is that you didn't meet with the, uh, with that student timely, uh, you said, in the middle of the page there where it's indented, "To say that I was too busy is an understatement." So are you saying that you were too busy to meet with a student having serious family issues?
Um, I don't know if that is the student that we're talking about because there were a couple of students that Ms. Barong, um, wanted, uh, requested. So I'm not for sure if that's that student or another student. It was, it was several students.
Okay, but you were saying that you were too busy to meet with a student, whoever that student may be, correct?
Uh, that's what my email indicated, yes, ma'am.
And if you go down to the next big paragraph, so it's the last paragraph on the page, you say, "In November 2014, not even three months into the school year, Ms. Jefferson said that she was at capacity for individual counseling." I'm sorry, this is Emily Barong saying that. So this was your quoting her. Um, did you tell Ms. Barong that you're at capacity for individual counseling?
Um, not in November 2015, that was November 2014.
Okay, but you did say that you're at capacity for counseling.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Morales had requested me to create a running record of students. Um, and I was supposed to see those students at the requested times as we agreed upon.
Do you realize that this student, uh, in Ms. Uh, Barong's affidavit, uh, she stated that this was a student who was engaging in self-harm threats?
Um, no, ma'am, I, like I said, I would need to look at everything because it's bits and pieces. Because the, the parent, the parent that we stayed after school for is different from another student. So that's why I said it's a couple of different students.
Okay, but if I told you that this was a student who Ms. Barong stated was engaging in self-harm threats, and you said that you're at capacity, would you have any reason to question that?
She didn't inform me of the self-harm.
She didn't inform me of the self-harm?
No, ma'am.
Do you think it's acceptable to say that you're at cap, capacity for any student who needs individual counseling?
When it's relating to a, a number of kids, I think, if I recall correctly, it was, I don't know, 10 to 12 students? And I'm supposed to see them, um, once a week? In addition to having guidance with about 20 kids, K through sixth grade, in addition to doing testing?
Objection, non-responsive.
Please restate the question. Please restate the question.
Do you think it's acceptable to say that you're at capacity when any student needs individual counseling?
No ma'am.
Can you go to exhibit 4A? Your exhibit 4A, and it's that very first page. And this was your response to HR specialist, Kim Byers affidavit. And this is when Ms. Byers said that you were aggressive during a meeting. And at the bottom, you say, this is your response to her affidavit. There was an agenda to document my expected aggressive, insubordinate, and disrespectful behavior on behalf of my principal, Claudia Morales, and as I am now informed by sworn affidavit, Kimberly Byers. So why would Ms. Byers and Ms. Morales expect you to be aggressive and subordinate and disrespectful in a meeting?
I believe in her statement, it said that she had to be on the phone just in case I didn't act professionally? That's why I made that statement.
And you don't have any idea why she'd feel she had to be on the phone just in case you expect, just in case you end up being aggressive?
No, I don't. There were several meetings, I believe, in this statement that I made with Ms. Morales without her.
Okay, but Mr. Holland was always at those meetings, correct?
He was present, yes ma'am.
Okay, what was his role there?
I'm not sure, Ms. Morales asked him to attend.
But Mr. Holland was at every meeting that when Ms. Byers wasn't there, wasn't he?
He was not at every single meeting.
He was at most of the meetings?
He, I believe I, I don't know if I put the dates in here. But those, those were the meetings where he was present. There were meetings in which me and Ms. Morales met alone.
Ms. Mooney, are you at a point where it's good to take a break? All right, let's take a five-minute break at this time. You have 42 minutes that you have used as of right now. We'll take a five-minute recess. We're back in.
I have a reminder of my time.
You've used 42 minutes, which means you have 48 minutes.
I pass the witness.
All right, reset. Are there any questions for this witness?
Briefly, but I want to be able to recall her, you're in my case.
Of course you'll be able to do that. Unless you dismiss her and tell her to go home.
And Pam, go to the school district's, uh, number eight, exhibit eight. Are you there?
Yes, sir.
That, that, exhibit eight, uh, that, that, that very thick stack of affidavits?
Yes, sir.
And, and submitted by the school district?
Yes, sir.
When did you first see these affidavits?
It's about a week, maybe a week and a half ago or so.
So, so, so first one's Kimberly Byers?
Yes, sir.
And, and the next one, Pia Foster?
Yes, sir.
Brandon Holland?
Yes, sir.
And, and Emily Barong?
Yes, sir.
And, and goes on with other teachers and all employees at Lynn Hale Elementary?
Yes.
That, that, and without going through each affidavit, each line, each paragraph. Is it fair to say that, that these affidavits talk about the 2013-14 school year? The 2014-15 school year, the 2015-16 school year?
Yes, sir.
That you received that, a annual performance evaluation each year of those years?
Yes, sir.
You didn't receive one though for the 15-16 school year, did you?
No, sir.
That, that, and even dur, or either during the evaluation process or your conferences, that with your building principal, did anyone ever give you with such clarity that the information stated in these affidavits?
No, sir.
Did anyone, did Ms. Byers ever tell you that you became aggressive during a meeting?
No.
And that, why did you think Byers was even present at these meetings?
I thought that she represented myself because I'm an employee of Arlington ISD as well. And as a mediator between my principal and myself, a neutral party.
After you read Byers' affidavit, do you still feel that way?
I don't.
You thought wrong whenever Byers was in there as the HR representative?
Yes, and she told me that, you know, this is not, I'm on, not, I'm not, I'm not on anyone's side, I'm just a neutral party. I represent the district.
That Mr. Holland is the former assistant principal at that school?
Yes, sir.
And that he wrote two and a half pages?
I believe so.
That, that, did Mr. Holland ever sit you down in the 13-14 school year? The 14-15 school year, the 15-16 school year? And, and talk to you about these various perceived deficiencies?
No, sir, he wasn't there in the 2013-2014 school year.
Well, during the 14-15 school year?
No, sir.
During the 15-16 school year?
No, sir.
That, classroom teacher, you were of course evaluated?
Could you clarify the question?
Yeah, sure, that you worked as a classroom teacher?
At Hutchinson.
At Hutchinson from the 2007, the 2008 school year, that through the 2012-13 school year?
Yes, sir.
And, and, were you evaluated?
Yes, I was.
And, and, do you believe that the teacher or school district employee, that you ought to have some idea of the administration's perceived deficiency?
Yes.
Do you believe you have a reasonable opportunity to of course remediate if you don't know that, that Mr. Holland or some other teacher may have a perceived deficiency?
No, I wouldn't have if I'm not aware.
Did, did Ms. Morales ever give you anywhere close to this detail set out in these various affidavits? That these various complaints and/or perceived deficiencies?
No, she would just say, everybody is saying that it must be true. That the teachers were not confident in me. That's the reason why they wouldn't send students to me, so they stopped referring students to me. But not the detail from who it was.
You understand, in large part, the district's trying to fire you based upon these affidavits?
Yes, sir, I do.
Do you think there's anything fair?
I don't.
You asking this board to be fair in judging the facts and weigh the evidence as they see fit in a good faith manner?
I do.
Pass the witness.
Ms. Jefferson, you received evaluation?
Hold on, hold on one second. All right, you have the time recorded? Okay.
Yeah. What was?
I'll let the court report.
Thank you.
All right, proceed.
Ms. Jefferson, you received evaluations for the 13-14 and the 14-15 school year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And those set for areas that you needed to improve upon, correct?
I believe it was something on there that, that had that column.
Okay, and Ms. Morales issued you somewhere around eight reprimands, correct?
For the entire time from 2014 through Jan, February 2016?
Okay, and each time she had a conference with you where she discussed with you the reasons for those reprimands, correct?
Each, could you repeat that?
Each time she issued you a reprimand, she had a conference with you in which she discussed the reasons for those reprimands?
She would give what was stated on her reprimands, the ones that we have a copy of.
And explain to you what you were being reprimanded for, correct?
She did not go into specific details, she would just read what was on the reprimand.
So you didn't have meetings with Ms. Morales that totaled upwards of 300 minutes while you were at the district?
Well, there was one that was almost an hour and a half. So I mean, that's like 90 right there, and that was January 20th.
And you were on three growth plans while you were at the district?
I was placed on a growth plan in November, I think the 2015, 2014?
I believe the question was just, were you placed on three growth plans?
Were you placed on three growth plans?
I was placed on two growth plans.
There weren't three growth plans?
There was a growth plan, I think it was November 2014 to January 2015 that I successfully completed. And then there was one in November of 2015.
And there was one in January of 2016, correct?
That's the same growth plan.
Okay, but it was issued to you on January 2016 because you didn't, you didn't complete the other growth plan, correct?
Ms. Morales stated I didn't complete the other growth plan because I believe it was either I didn't?
Objection, non-responsive.
She's not finished her answer.
I would ask the witness though to be, listen carefully to the question and then answer the question that is asked.
She was interrupted, you gave instructions that were not to?
I'm sorry, I won't interrupt.
Talk over people, she was not through with her answer.
All right, sustained.
I'm sorry, I will not interrupt, go ahead. So, let me repeat the question. You didn't complete that November 2015 growth plan, correct?
It was extended by Ms. Morales.
Okay, to January. So each time you were put on a growth plan, there was also a conference addressing those areas in need of growth, correct?
Yes, there was.
And each time, Ms. Morales, in one situation, your director of counseling, Nell Felding, and Kimberly Byers on some occasions, all of them were there discussing the areas where you needed growth, correct?
I don't, once again, Ms. Byers told me she was a neutral party. And Ms. Felding came, I believe Ms. Morales asked her to come to clarify what my counseling responsibilities were.
Pass the witness.
That, that go?
Hold on a second, let's let her record the time. You ready? Please.
That, that go to the, the school district exhibit number nine in the white notebook. And that go to the third page of that document? That, that is, the date up on top says June 16th, 2016, but someone scratched out 2016 and put 2014?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that your, your 13-14 performance evaluation? I'm on page?
I believe so.
Right, okay, and, and, and may I approach just to make sure?
Yep.
And Ms., Ms. Morales evaluated you?
Yes.
Please sit near the microphone.
The first sentence, Ms. Jefferson's completed her first year as a counselor?
As a school council, yes, sir.
And, and how would you rate your, your first year school, your first year evaluation as a school council? That it seems to be rated differently than the teacher's PDAAS evaluation, is it not?
Yes, it's different.
And that what is your understanding? That was this a good evaluation, average evaluation, below average evaluation?
Proficient.
Okay, and, and now let's go to your 14-15 evaluation. The first two pages of exhibit number nine. And, and that's dated, and, and someone dated that correctly, did they not? June 11th of 15?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and who evaluated you?
Ms. Morales.
That read the first sentence under, and, and, under comments?
As a second-year school councilor, Ms. Jefferson has made some growth.
So, so Morales, that in June 15, about a year ago, acknowledged that you had made growth in your second year as a council?
Yes, sir.
That read the first sentence under recommendations for professional growth, read that for us.
I am confident that Ms. Jefferson will continue to grow professionally.
That, that, and would you agree with me? That sounds like that you've shown growth and she's confident you can continue to show growth?
Yes, sir.
And is that important to you?
It is.
Why is that?
Because I don't want to be supported by my principal.
That is, being a school counselor important to you?
Yes.
Tell us why.
As, as a child, I was labeled at risk. And, because my mom was a single parent. Thank you, and, when I was in middle school, no one informed me to take the events classes. So my eighth grade year, at the graduation ceremony, I looked at the back of the program and there were students who had honors by their name. And I wasn't for sure why my name wasn't marked. And I guess it kind of set the tone for me to go to my counselor to ask questions, to try harder because my counselor didn't tell me to take those classes. So it was the summer of 91. At UTA, they had a program called YOU. It's Youth Opportunities Unlimited for at-risk kids. It was to expose them to college life. And so I was selected to participate in that program. We would, in the mornings or the afternoons, you got to select the time in which you would go to college. We took pre-algebra and English, and then the rest of the day we worked, like in the office or on campus. And so that program allowed me to become the valedictorian of that class for YOU. And that was the turning point for me to take events classes. I graduated in the top 10% of my high school. And with the desires of becoming a counselor so that I could help at-risk kids.
Now briefly, where did you grow up?
In Atlanta, Texas.
And for the people here who don't know where Atlanta is, is that close to Texarkana?
It's 25 miles north of Texarkana, about 50 miles from Shreveport, population 5,000.
And, and I was gonna wait until later, I want to go and talk about it now, your, your personal history. And, and tell us about parents and whether they worked outside of their home? And, and if you had brothers and also sisters?
My mom was a single parent. I'm sorry. She had me when she was sixteen. She had to drop out of school. She worked. From the time I was conceived, and she's still working in a nursing home. I'm the oldest of four children. I was the first person to get a college degree in my family and the first person to get a master's degree. I'm, uh, I have, it's me, my brother, and my two younger sisters, and my stepdad. It's just like.
You were the first person in your family to go to college?
Yeah.
Get a bachelor?
Yes, sir.
Why did you go to college?
It was important to my mom because she had me at an early age. She couldn't complete school. So I wanted to do something better for myself so that I would be able to take care of my family.
You began teaching in, in the Arlington School District that in August of two thousand six, two thousand seven school year?
Two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
Two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And, and, uh, you taught for approximately six years?
Yes, sir.
Why did you go get a master's, all twins?
Um, I wanted to be a school counselor. I wanted to help kids who are at-risk like me to know that there will be barriers, but your intelligence would get you, get you to where you need to be. Um, that was so important for me to give back because Arlington, the University of Texas at Arlington, offered the Y-O-U program, which made a big difference in my life. So I went to undergraduate there, and I just wanted to work and give back for the city of Arlington.
Now, in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight school year, did you have children?
Yes.
How many?
Um, two.
And today, how many do you have?
I have three.
Their ages and gender?
Um, I have all girls. I have a seventeen-year-old who attended summer high school on her way to college. I have a thirteen-year-old. She's in TA Howard Middle School, and a four-year-old.
And, and, and when did you obtain your master?
December twenty-ten.
And, 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 and why did you do that?
Um, like I said, it was important. I wanted to be a school counselor. School, being a school counselor is my career, like, my dream job.
Now, now, now substantively, they're not saying you're all terrible as a school counselor. But if you read the affidavits, they seem to say that you can't get along with anybody.
Right.
Well, you'll agree with me that you can be the very best school counselor in the entire Dallas-Fulworth metroplex. But if you can't get along with anybody, that you're not the best. You'll agree with that, right?
Yeah.
Well, well, what do you tell the board about your, all of these various teachers and these HR representatives saying that you're, you're such a bad person to get along with?
I'm, I'm not a bad person to get along with. I do believe in speaking up for when, you know, when things are not right or not accurate. And sometimes that can be considered as being insubordinate or disrespectful.
That, 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 have you ever intended to be disrespectful, to be ugly?
No.
To parents?
Absolutely not.
That to teachers?
No.
Students?
No.
And certainly administrators?
No.
You know, the building principal is the chief instructional leader at that campus.
Yes, sir.
And she, and the education code gives her the right to, to, to be the boss?
Yes, sir.
You have attitude towards her?
No.
Well, she says it, right?
She does.
And, and, and that she says you can't agree or disagree in a professional man, and that she says that throughout, does she not?
She does.
Well, is there any truth to that?
Um, no. Um, no.
That, you believe if you would agree with everything she would have ever told you, that not ever voiced your own opinion, you think you would be sitting there now?
No.
Why not?
Because I would have been in agreement with her.
And you would have been more of a team player?
Yes.
Do you understand non-renewal is the same as termination?
I do.
And you understand every application of employment at a public school district has ever been non-renewed?
I do.
Why are you fired?
Because I worked hard to get here. Nobody called in favors for me. I went to school. I got my degrees. I worked as a teacher. And I earned my job as a school counselor.
And let's assume the board members agree with everything you just said, that, but think you can't be above the building principal's authority. And what do you say to that? In other words, that you have to be subordinate?
I, I do feel that, that you have to do what your principal says, but when there's inaccurate information, I don't think you should just go al, go along with the principal just because she says that it is factual information and not stand up for yourself.
We'll talk about your rebuttals in more detail a bit, but, but is it fair to say that, that in the black notebook, that your exhibits, that exhibits four A through, uh, through four I reflect your rebuttals to each affidavit submitted by the school administration?
Yes.
And, 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 and that when did you prepare these?
It took me days. And it was like, I think maybe I started on at three PM and ended at two or three o'clock in the morning.
You gave it a lot of thought, a lot of work, a lot of effort.
I did.
Why is that?
Because thi, this is my job, how I provide for my family.
Now, now, in our hour and a half of presentation, we're not gonna have time to talk about each line by line of your rebuttals, are we?
No, sir.
Nevertheless, are you asking the board to please read them?
I am.
And is that important to you?
It's very important to me.
That, that, that also look in, in the black notebook, that your exhibits, five A through five J, that do those represent your rebuttals to, that to your building principal's walkthroughs and conference summaries and reprimands?
Yes, sir.
Are you hoping at least that, that these people read these, that they'll agree with me that you're not nearly as bad as this administration makes you out to be?
I hope that they will.
All right, um, could you please give us an update on the time for each party? Oh. Six, so he's at twenty-three minutes due. And administration is at forty-two minutes due? Forty-six. All right, thank you. Is there any further redirect?
Just one. Ms. Jefferson, as an at-risk child, when you were growing up, what do you think it would have, how do you think you would have felt if you needed counseling services and your school counselor told you that she was at capacity?
I don't believe my counselor would have told me that.
Pass the witness.
Uh, did you ever tell a student that?
I never told a student that.
That, that they're trying to make it sound like, like, like you're at lunch. That's not my job. I can't work after school. I'm at capacity. Can you explain that to the board?
Um, yes. Um, I know that you probably have received the information from my Director of Counseling, Nell Fielding, um, and the proponent of trying to get every elementary counselor a testing facilitator, and it is greatly needed. As the exhibits twenty-four and twenty-five of the district, it states about assessments. There in those exhibits, they're talking about psychological assessments, um, not testing, not local assessments, not STAR testing. And in order to truly service the kids the way we need to, as you noted, there are a lot of socially, emotionally, issues at the elementary level. It would be such a wonderful thing to grant schools counselors a testing facilitator so that they have more time to direct, direct those concerns and issues.
And, and did you work long hours like the way most of you do?
Yes, sir.
And, and give the board some idea, how many hours a day?
Well, most of the time, um, I, I, I didn't get to take lunch because when you're a school counselor, you have, you have guidance, and guidance is a lot. Like, you have to go to all the classes, kindergarten through sixth grade. Um, and then in addition to guidance, you have to do testing. In addition to that, you have to see kids. And in addition to that, if it's something that happens unexpectedly at the campus, you're called in to do that. If a parent call, you're called in to do that. So it's some days that I, it would be almost three o'clock. I hadn't taken the lunch because I'm constantly working. I don't have an opportunity to stop.
Doesn't the law provide you to eat free lunch for all teachers, employees?
Yes.
Well, did you ever file a grievance over that?
I did.
Yeah, you did file a grievance, did you not?
I did. Yes, I did.
And, and, and those documents are part of the school administration's exhibits and also your exhibit.
Yes, sir.
And, and just briefly explain why you filed it?
Well, um, I know that I have received a lot of reprimands, but the reprimands come from a prior incident. The first reprimand in, uh, April twenty-fourteen, I believe, it was from a prior incident with a teacher being accused of giving a student answers to the STAR test. And if there's something to happen, she'll call me in and talk about everything from November until April, not what specifically is happening at that moment. Um, the reprimand in November of twenty-fourteen, um, that was because she forgot that, um, she approved the drug interventionist to come to our school to speak to our students during Red Ribbon Week. Um, previously in February, she was on the news for the bullying incident, so I guess she was hysterical not having approved a drug interventionist. But I emailed her their email documentation that she didn't know she was aware, and she wanted to meet with me. And, um, that was the purpose of that reprimand. The purpose of the one from November twenty-fifteen was because she didn't like that I advised a, a parent that he, if he wasn't happy at the campus level, that Mr. Heel is over at Student Services. That was the reason for that reprimand. And the rest of the reprimands, in, in December eighth, she said that I hung up on her, uh, on the phone call, or I didn't see in the email. I was reprimanded for that.
So then basically, you're grieving the fourteen, the fifteen, sixteen reprimands?
Yes.
And, and, and so we can give, uh, some direction, the school district's exhibit number twenty-two reflects your actual grievance, does it not?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then your exhibit, and, and then your exhibit, uh, that, uh, that, and, and then you submitted exhibits to your grievance, did you not, in your exhibits?
I believe so.
And, and, uh, and, uh, that's marked exhibit number nine to your exhibit, does it not?
Exhibit number nine in my book just has the.
The exhibits.
The exhibits.
Ms. Ortiz, let her answer.
It's for the, um, counselors in need of assistance, not my rebut, I don't see my rebuttals in here.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Uh, your exhibit number nine reflects your grievance exhibit, does it not? After tab number nine.
You can go shower, if it helps.
Okay.
That on the lower right-hand corner, though, of these documents, you have one, and you have two, and so forth. Those represent, the status represented at the grievance hearing.
Yes.
Okay. And, and, and the status of that grievance hearing, and you're grieving your, your fifteen, sixteen reprimands is, that is pinned in before the school board, does it not?
It is.
And so we don't have a final decision on your grievance regarding, your complaint regarding the fifteen, sixteen reprimands.
Uh, no, we don't.
So the district is trying to fire you based upon these affidavits that you just recently saw.
Yes, sir.
And they're trying to fire you based upon reprimands that you're still grieving.
Yes, sir.
And, and you understand you have a right to file a grievance?
I do.
And you understand you have a right to have this board serve as a fair impartial tribunal with respect to your, your grievance?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Pass the witness.
Ms. Ortiz, let me just clarify because I, I think that by agreement, the grievance was abated. I just wanna, uh, the, the level three, is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That, that, we're not complaining. Am I using time?
No, we can take him off the clock for this. I just wanna confirm that you, part of your complaint is not that, that the grievance was not completed.
Correct. We're not complaining about it.
Okay.
And, 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 and we're complaining or just noting that we don't have a final decision on our.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, could you, uh, again, tell us the time for each party that they've used? Okay. All right. Re, re, redirect.
I have no questions.
All right. Ms. Jefferson, you can take your seat again. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can just leave it there.
Okay.
Will the administration please call its next witness?
I'd like to call Claudia Morales.
All right. Ms. Morales, I want to remind you, you're still under oath.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Claudia Morales.
And you're the principal at Lynn Hale, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna direct you to exhibit twelve, Arlington's exhibit twelve. And these are conference summaries that, uh, that Ms. Jefferson has received, correct?
Yes.
And the first one is one you issued, but before that, uh, she received five conference summaries at Hutchinson, correct?
Yes.
And can you just tell the board what, what generally was?
To any testimony regarding Hutchinson, that, that she served as a school counselor the last three years, that my client's performance as a classroom. That my client's performance as a classroom teacher...
The clock will stop.
...that at Hutchinson is remote. If years ago, number one, if as a teacher, not as a school counselor, and this district's, uh, board president's own notice of a proposed nonrenewal talks about school counseling only, not...
Can I respond?
Well, I, I'm going to instruct the board that its decision may only be based upon the 2015, 16 school year. Uh, but at the same time, if there is evidence that supports anything that is listed for the 2015, 16 school year, that you consider that, uh, as possibly, um, a pattern, but you cannot use it for a final decision with respect to the proposal for nonrenewal.
May I say respectfully, if the, the rules of evidence apply, or at least assert as some guidance, what I heard you say is true.
Whoa.
It's, 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 it's that arguably allow anything and everything that, that ever occurred to my client since the 2007, 2008 school year, and that's remote, that's prejudicial.
May I respond?
Yes, counsel.
We have agreed that these are in evidence. There was no relevance objection at the time. So these are already in evidence. So they're open for questioning. We're using them for the limited purposes of showing those issues which were brought up in the nonrenewal. We're not using them for, to show her performance as a teacher. And so that, that we will use them for those very limited purposes, and they're already in evidence.
All right. Thank you. I, I do believe, just, just like Ms. Jefferson was allowed to talk about her, her youth, um, which also was prior to the 2015, 16 school year, both parties are permitted to bring in evidence to show the history of the individual. And because it is in evidence, um, I'll let you make specific objections as we go along if you hear something in particular that you feel needs to be objected to. Otherwise, I'll, I'll over the, I'll overrule the grievance at this time.
And Mr. Hakabon, could you please direct this board that, that talking about Ms. Jefferson's youth, as you put it, that is an absolute lie. This is a nonrenewal, not a very old contract of Ms. Jefferson's contract. And, and, and her personal history is front and center. This stuff regarding Hutchinson is, uh, uh, that is drastic, it's brought out for just one reason, to prejudice my...
Well, counsel, you didn't object to the documents, so she's just talking about the documents. Um, but it is duly noted. Thank you. Please proceed with your questions.
Thank you. So these from, these five from Hutchinson, can you just very generally say what the subject matter of these, uh, conference summaries were?
Uh, yes, there were concerns with the way she communicated with administration.
And were there some examples of that given?
Uh, yes. In one example, uh, from the principal, um, she had sent, uh, eight students out of class because she had had enough. Um, in another example from, um, Jenny Holland, the assistant principal, um, uh, she directed a student to stand in the corner as a result of being off task. And then a conference from, um, conference summary from Mr. Tapia, the principal, regarding, um, the attendance of faculty meetings, which Ms. Jefferson missed a meeting because she had scheduled a college course and she couldn't be there, when she was directed by Mr. Tapia to be there.
Okay. Can I just stop you? Will you just speak to what you said? The general topic is professionalism, I think you said.
Yes. Professionalism in communication.
So generally, what were, were there any more examples of that?
Um, yes. Um, there were some statements that Ms. Jefferson, um, said to the principal during some of these conferences when he was trying to find out what was going on, for example, at the time when she missed one of the faculty meetings. Um, Mr. Tapia proceeded to write a reprimand. Um, during that conversation, Mr. Nix, uh, who is now a principal in Arlington ISD, at that time he was the assistant principal, wrote a summary of the meeting. And in that summary of the meeting, um, Mr., uh, Ms. Jefferson was not happy with the reprimand that Mr. Tapia, um...
She has no idea whether or not...
I'm reading it, I'm reading it from the summary of the meeting. I can read it.
Hold on, hold on. I, I believe the, the question was, could you just summarize the contents, not specifics? So if you could just summarize.
And more specifically, what were the examples? You said that the general topic was professionalism of the...
Yes.
What were examples of her not being professional? Without getting into the whole...
Okay. So far it's...
I'm, I'm sorry?
Hi.
Let's stop the clock. All right. First of all, it's not unprofessional for someone to bring in their own notes, but you're entitled to ask to see them.
No, but, but, but I understand this is not, we're supposed to act. And in court of law, you wouldn't allow witnesses to, and, 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 I don't have that, that's unfair.
I'm sorry, are you... Ms. Ortiz, you have the opportunity for cross-examination, and I...
No, no, no. I get that, I don't have those...
I can look at the one they provided.
I don't have those, I'm a client, but I have the same document everybody else has.
Those are all the documents that you have? There's nothing...
No, it went all over. She's reading.
Those were my notes.
And if this board doesn't understand, it's a little unfair. Well, I will give up.
I will not use those.
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Ortiz, are you going to share your notes? I don't understand why...
What?
May I finish?
No, 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 I'm not sharing my notes. You don't have to do that.
Ms. Ortiz, can I finish?
And you understand I have parent client privilege with my client, and my notes are, are most hard. You shouldn't, that you can't allow witnesses to testify and, and read your own person.
Now, may I finish?
Yes.
Thank you. Witnesses in court bring up their notes all the time, and you know that, and they're allowed to testify, and you're allowed as counsel to ask to see those notes. Now...
This was supposed to be a due process here.
You know it's not a due pro, you know it's not a due process hearing. You know the law, and this is a nonrenewal hearing. The commissioner has been very specific.
We'll just stipulate that she will use the copy of exhibits that are on there and all the ones of her notes.
You are welcome to look at them, as I said multiple times. Now, let's go back on the clock. Proceed to your next question.
Okay. So, um, Exhibit Nine, and page 47, this was the end of the year summative for, uh, for Ms. Jefferson for the 2013, 14 school year, correct?
Yes.
And you wrote in there what your concerns were, which is on the next page.
Yes.
And can you just summarize your concerns?
I'm sorry, I'm not reading.
All right. Stop the clock.
School administration's Exhibit Nine?
Yes. Page 48. Down here at the bottom, it's all Bates numbered. Page 48. I'm sorry, Exhibit, did you say Exhibit Nine? Page 48. Yours, sir.
No, it was not.
No. She's looking at Jefferson, uh, Administration exhibits, and it has a Bates label on the bottom right.
Are your copies Bates labeled?
Do you have the administration's notebook? Do you have the administration notebook with their exhibits?
Yes. Yeah. And my summit is, is in Bates.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, then use that one. Okay, hold on, wait for him to get to the page.
Okay. So it's...
Exhibit Nine.
Exhibit Nine, page 48.
Thank you.
Okay. Wait, are you there? Okay. Please ask your question again.
So you listed, um, some concerns that year for Ms. Jefferson, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what were those concerns?
Um, communication, um, and concerns with performance.
Okay. And so, um, that wasn't a perf, was, or was it? I'll ask you. Was this, was this, I know we don't use the word proficient in a summative evaluation for a counselor. Was this a proficient evaluation?
No.
Okay. And you referred in here to a, um, conference summary as well as two, uh, reprimands that were given that year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And just very briefly, what was the issue in the conference summary of April 17th, 2014? And that's Exhibit 12.
Exhibit 12. Okay. On April 17th, uh, 2014, it was due to the way she communicated with me, um, and, and staff, very disrespectfully.
Okay. And then when we go to the reprimand, which is her first reprimand of that year, was Exhibit 19. Can you just, this, we talked about earlier, this was when she was late to start testing, correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. How did Ms. Jefferson respond when you addressed the fact that she was late for STAR testing?
Just like any time I would want to get her side of the story, she would get very defensive, very aggressive, hostile, very quickly, and combative at some times. And this, this incident, uh, was no different.
Okay. And did you have any issue with her saying, um, you know, you're qualified to take over my duties, and that's what you were doing when I, when I showed up?
Yes.
And what were your issues there?
My issue was that her responsibility was to oversee STAR, and she was not there on time on a STAR testing day. She was late, and that is unacceptable.
Okay. And she mentioned earlier that STAR testing didn't start till nine. Is it the expectation that coordinator for testing just be there at nine, or even at 8:05 when school starts?
No, ma'am. The expectation is that if you are overseeing STAR, that you are there as early as 7:30.
Okay. So why would you be there early?
Um, to have everything ready, because teachers come and start gathering the STAR test as early as 7:30. Uh, sometimes if there were discrepancies with, um, any of small group testing, or any discrepancies that would come up, then she would be there to address those discrepancies, but she wasn't there.
Okay. And can you describe, uh, we talked about the statement that you have a problem. Can you describe what the circumstances around that were, that statement was, what were?
Um, she told me that I had a problem if I did not understand why she was, she was late, and that family came first, and that if I did not understand that, then, then I had a problem.
And did you say it like that, then you have a problem?
Yes, ma'am.
Or did you say it...
No, with the attitude, with the tone.
Okay. And, uh, were, was there any issues? She said earlier that testing was over by 2:45 that day, so she, she, or, you know, before 2:45 when she requested to leave. So that was fine. She could leave that, that day of STAR testing. Or even the next day when she claimed, uh, that testing would be over by 1 o'clock. Was, do you have any issues with those statements?
Yes, ma'am. Again, because we never know what's going to come up with testing. And as the person in charge of it for STAR, she needs to be there.
Uh, okay. And moving to the 14, 15 school year, did anything notable happen at the beginning of that year?
Uh, yes. Ms. Jefferson several times would come to me, and she would apologize to me for the way she spoke to me, the way she treated me, and she would promise me that she would do better.
Okay. So moving to, back to Exhibit Nine, page 45.
Page 10, 45?
Yes, sir. Okay. So Mr. Ortiz mentioned earlier that you said in here that Ms., uh, Ms. Jefferson was showing growth. So this seems like it was a more positive review. Is that the case?
Uh, yes. And this is June 11th, 2016? Is that what I'm reading?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay. So this was the end of the school year 2014, 2015. Um, yes, that was approximately four months after her first growth plan. She went on a growth plan that January of 2014.
So was, so she was on a growth plan that year?
Yes. So that helped her show growth.
Okay.
Yes.
And she had completed that one?
Yes.
Um, and did anything else occur that led you to write some positive things in here in the commendation section?
Um, yes. I, my recommendation, because I wanted to make sure that she sustained that, so my recommendation, um, I listed that, you know, the items, and I'm so sorry, I can't read them because they're so small, um, but on the next page where I continued my recommendations just to keep staff informed of guidance lessons, so I, I made it a point to list the items that were key, that she sustained, so that she could continue to be an effective counselor for our students.
And just to be clear, less than six months later, she was back on a growth plan, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And she was also issued two reprimands that year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so let's move to, um, pa, or Exhibit 17. And page 76. What was that reprimand dealing with? That was dated November 6th, 2014.
Yes. This was a reprimand, again, um, for the way she spoke to me.
I'm sorry, hold on one minute. It's Exhibit 17.
Exhibit 17, Bates label 76.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, this was the way, um, this was a reprimand for being disrespectful to me once again, whenever I would try to get her side of the story of what was going on. And in this instance, uh, she did not come to work, uh, instead of reporting the absence to me, which is what the protocol states at the bottom of that exhibit, she, uh, contacted the guidance tech.
And she had also contacted the guidance tech during STAR testing, correct?
Yes.
Does it say anywhere in Arlington ISD policy that you're to notify your assistant if you're not coming to work for them?
No.
So, moving on to Exhibit 18, and this one addresses several issues. This was on November 6th, 2014, correct?
Yes.
And just to clear up something that was, uh, mentioned earlier, uh, in this reprimand with the supporting documentation that we've provided, on page 82, the same exhibit, page 82.
Yes.
Can you read that last paragraph of, of Ms. Jefferson? This is an email from Ms. Jefferson to Mrs. Barong.
Yes. Currently, I'm at capacity as far as individual counseling, but I can speak with him from time to time.
Okay. So based on Ms. Jefferson's statement earlier, she may not have said directly to the student she was at capacity, but she did say she was at capacity and couldn't, couldn't see a student but time to time, from time to time, correct?
Yes. And that, and that was something that was told to staff whenever they would try to refer students to her. She was at capacity, or she had a lot of testing going on.
And so that's kind of what this, um, this reprimand on Exhibit 18, page 78, beginning on page 78, that deals with a lot of those issues, right? Telling staff that she's at capacity, or she's busy, and that's why she didn't get back them.
Yes.
And so that's documented in here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I want to address, uh, on page 79, paragraph D. And it says on October 2nd, 2014, uh, when Brandon Holland asked you to assist with the kindergarten student in crisis, you told him you were having lunch. And then when she said, when he asked her if she could assist in 30 minutes, she said, like I said, I'm having lunch. What is your definition of in crisis? Because clearly Ms. Jefferson didn't believe the student was in crisis.
To me, the, um, the definition of in crisis is when a student cannot perform in a classroom, just like the other, any other regular student would perform in, in the classroom. In this instance, the student was crying uncontrollably in the main office.
So if a student's crying uncontrollably in the main office, that to you would be in crisis?
Yes. And Ms. Jefferson was sitting right across from this student waiting, uh, to see Mr. Holland.
Okay. Well, this was when she said she was having lunch, so she was having lunch.
I am so sorry, that's another incident. Yes, you're right.
Okay. Well, let's talk about the, so this is the issue where Mr. Holland said that the student was in crisis. Ms. Jefferson clearly disagrees, but either way, she told him, I'm not going to see the student now because I'm having lunch.
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the incident you're talking about, which I think is letter E. And can you explain what that issue was?
Um, so, letter E is a student who, again, was crying uncontrollably... So, letter E is a student who, again, was crying uncontrollably in the office. In this incident, I saw the student crying, and I saw Ms. Jefferson who was sitting behind the clerk desk, and I asked Ms. Jefferson to please reach out to the student to see what was going on. Ms. Jefferson ignored me, she did not respond, she didn't say anything, she just looked at me, and then after a few minutes later of just sitting there not saying anything, then she approached the student.
But she waited a good, how long would you say?
About three to four minutes.
After you told her to help the student?
Yes.
Okay, and then under F, you say, on November sixth, you declined a teacher request for an after-school parent meeting. So you state, she stated she's unavailable after school. Are there other expectations other than an occasional parent meeting when maybe a counselor would be expected to go past their contracted hours?
Absolutely, anything that we can do to, to support the student, if it means staying after school, then we stay after school to meet with the parent.
And what are the, are there other examples of times when, when a counselor may be called upon to work past contracted hours?
Yes, when we have school-wide events or during testing times, the expectation is for us to arrive there early to make sure that everything's ready to go for our students on testing days.
Okay, and did you address that in four B of this, of this reprimand? Her failure to attend after-school, and why is it important for a counselor to attend extracurricular activities?
Because it's important to build those positive relationships with the community, and I wanted the community to get to know her and know that she is a counselor, and I also wanted the students to see her, that she was part of what we do, she's part of our family, so I, I wanted her to be part of it.
Okay, and moving back to seventy-eight, I wanted to ask you about the calendar that you said has been, had been in place since October eighth, two thousand and fourteen. So you had a, what was the purpose of the counseling calendar that was in place since October eighth, two thousand fourteen?
The purpose of the counseling calendar was to make sure that the students were being serviced by Ms. Jefferson. I was receiving, you know, a lot of concerns from teachers and staff that, you know, they were going to Ms. Jefferson, asking her to see a student, she was always at capacity, too busy, didn't have time to see them, and I wanted to make sure that she was servicing the students.
Okay, and can you move to page eighty-three of that same exhibit?
As you get ready to do that, we're going to take a five-minute break to stretch, so people just need to get up for a little bit, so let's go off the clock and stop for five minutes.
Can I have a time check?
Yeah, could each party have the time check first? All right, we are back on the record and continuing on. Administration, your next question.
Thank you, Mrs. Morales, can you go to our exhibit ten, Administration's exhibit ten?
Yes.
So, Ms. Jefferson received two growth plans during the fifteen, sixteen school year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and can you just, page fifty-two of that exhibit ten, explain what the concerns were, what was targeted in that growth plan?
We were targeting professional behavior, professional standards.
Okay, and did she complete that growth plan?
This one, it was unsuccessfully unsuccessful because she received a written reprimand on December ninth, and also she failed to follow directives given to her.
So it looks like page fifty-one was the, was the growth plan dated eleven thirteen fifteen, but page two is also a growth plan dated eleven thirteen fifteen, but it's signed on one eleven sixteen, correct?
Yes.
So why the discrepancy in the dates on the signatures?
So it's the same growth plan, but if you note on page fifty-two, you see that numbers four and five were added, which tells you whether the plan was successfully completed or not.
So that indicated it was not?
It wasn't not completed, and we met on January eleventh, two thousand sixteen to discuss the outcome of our plan.
Okay, and then moving to page forty-nine, this is dated January twentieth, twenty sixteen, and what were the, so this was after the last one wasn't completed, correct?
Yes.
And what were the areas of growth in this?
Here, it was again, once again, professional communication with me, following directives, having followed through with her roles and responsibilities, time management, following district policies, and implementing a comprehensive guidance and counseling program at our school.
Okay, so it looks like in all of these growth plans that a major part of it was requesting that Ms., or instructing Ms. Jefferson to log her time, log her time for guidance lessons, log her time for counseling, what was the reasoning for the logging?
The reason for the logging was because, once again, there were concerns when students were being referred to her, you know, she would tell the staff that she was too busy, or she was not responding fastly enough to address the student's concerns.
So this was so you could keep track of how she was spending her time?
Yes, and also that would give me an understanding that if she needed some more additional support from me, that I could help her, but she never came to me asking for support with regards to, I'm too busy.
Okay, and what was her reason she was so busy if she wasn't doing guidance lessons and she wasn't doing individual counseling, what was she doing?
Well, she claims that she was dealing with testing, however, she had an amazing guidance tech who was outstanding and went above and beyond her roles and responsibilities as a guidance tech.
So did she do all the testing for the school all the way through since she's been with us?
So, Ms. Jefferson, as of January twenty-third fifteen, which is on page fifty-three, that's when the first, she went on the first growth plan.
Okay, January twenty-third fifteen, okay.
And it's page fifty-three, at that time, responsibilities for school, for district-wide testing were taken away from her because she claimed that she was too busy to see students because of testing, so the only testing responsibility that was given to her, we under, we all agreed that she would oversee STAR with the understanding that she would assist the guidance tech with school-wide testing as needed.
And when is STAR?
STAR is, usually starts around April, March, April, sometimes May, depends.
And so after you took away all of her testing duties except STAR, did you get less complaints about her not showing up to guidance lessons or that she didn't see students?
No, the complaints continued.
And then she also received four reprimands during that fifteen, sixteen school year, correct?
Yes.
And we have provided copies of those in exhibits thirteen to sixteen, correct?
Yes.
Pass away.
All right, hold on. We need a recording of time. That leaves twenty-two minutes. Ortiz, you have sixty minutes. You, you have, I'm just reminding you, you have sixty minutes remaining.
Right, and, and could someone wave an arm after I've used fifteen years?
I will do my best.
Yeah, Mrs. Morales, my name is Daniel Ortiz, until denied, we've not met.
Right, sir, no, we've never met.
If you don't understand anything that I asked, let me know.
Yes.
Because otherwise, I, I shall assume that you have an issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
And, and school districts exhibits that thirteen through sixteen are the four reprimands that were issued to my client during the fifteen, sixteen school year?
Yes.
And, and you know that she grieved those four reprimands?
Yes.
And, 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 and that whether or not school boards heard them or not, you're not sure, or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. And, and you'll agree with me, she has a right to file a grievance.
Yes.
And, and that here in, in Arlington Infant School District, we have a right that to agree, to disagree.
Yes.
And, and, and that as long as we do it professionally.
Yes.
And what exactly do you say my client is not professional when she disagrees with you?
Just the way she speaks to me, anytime I try to get her side of the story and a concern is reported to me, she becomes very aggressive, very disrespectful, there's been instances where I want to meet with her so that we can discuss, discuss it in a meeting, and she is insubordinate to that meeting, she tells me, I'm not meeting with you, she's made comments to me during requests like that, of, of that nature, I'm tired of you, I don't want to talk to you, I'm going to Mr. Hill, so she makes it very difficult for me to address concerns that are being reported to me about her performance.
Well, let's talk about, about those concerns, that, let's go to the growth plan that you issued, and, and just for the benefit of the board members, and that, what's a growth plan?
A growth plan is when there are issues with performance, with shortcomings in performance, then we provide support for, for the counselor, and we put him on a growth plan.
As, as a building principal, aren't you, part of your duties is to, is to teach everyone at your building to become better employees?
Yes.
And, and that a growth plan is an effort to do that, isn't it?
Yes.
That to more specifically point out deficiencies.
Yes.
And, and to give them a reasonable time. Give, to give employee a reasonable time to, of course, remediate deficiencies.
Yes.
And isn't remediation the goal?
I don't understand.
Well, yeah, as building principal, aren't you trying to help employees become better?
Yes.
And you'll agree with me, will you not, that, that a perfect employee doesn't exist?
Right.
And my client never professed to be a perfect employee, did she?
No, she did not.
And, 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 and your job as a building principal is, that is to teach them and also help them to become better.
Yes.
And a growth plan is an effort in that regard.
Yes.
Okay, that, that, now let's look at the, the very first growth plan under exhibit number ten, I'm looking at the notebook someone gave me because mine's not bait stamped, but bait stamp forty-nine and fifty.
Okay.
Now, now intervention plan period, that at the top of page forty-nine, intervention plan period, one twenty-one sixteen through two twenty-six sixteen?
Yes.
Now, what do those dates signify, mean?
They signify that this is, this is the time when she's placed on this growth plan, and she's expected to perform everything that's documented in this growth plan.
And, and you gave her until February twenty-sixth of this year?
Yes.
Now, now, of course, you recommended that to Scott Cale, that my client be non-renewed by a letter dated February eleventh, two thousand sixteen, didn't you?
Yes.
And, and let's find that letter, that that look at the school district's exhibit number six. Is that a letter from you on, on school district letterhead that dated February eleventh of two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
And, and that you recommended non-renewal?
Yes.
And by February eleventh, if not sooner, you'd already decided she needs to be non-renewed?
Yes.
And how much before February eleventh did you decide she needs to be non-renewed?
I, I don't know a specific time when I-
A week, two weeks or so, more or less?
I, I couldn't tell you a specific time.
It could have been January twenty-one? Is that possible?
I don't know.
Okay, then, then let's go back to this last growth plan, the one that's marked exhibit ten, the one bait stamped forty-nine. That if you would have already decided as of January twenty-one, she needs to be, not renewed, why did you give her a growth plan?
I don't, I'm not, I didn't say that I had already decided.
Well, February eleventh you had.
February eleventh I had.
Right, right.
That was after she started on the growth plan.
Right, right, but you had all the difference between February twenty-sixth and February eleventh, twenty-one days to show growth, to at least try to show growth, didn't you?
Right, but as, as you know, her first growth plan was given to her back in two thousand fourteen, and the recommendation was given to the board in two thousand sixteen, that's two years, two years to give her enough time to show growth.
Right, right, I understand that, and, and you're smiling, anything funny about this procedure?
No, it's not, but-
And, and you understand non-renew, that, that you understand non-renewal is like a termination?
Yes, sir.
So, so if this board non-renews my client, there's nothing funny about that, is there?
Right.
Well, why are you smiling?
Objection, harassing witness.
I don't mean to be, but, but this is a serious matter, council said that in open statements, she doesn't think so, that's the problem that I have to talk about.
Counsel, the fact that she smiled didn't mean she doesn't think it's a serious matter, necessarily.
Please don't speak for her.
Well, nor should you, you can ask her questions and let her answer them, okay?
So, in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year, you gave my client her very first growth-
Yes.
And you talked about that with counsel early.
I talked about the growth plan with counsel earlier?
The, that you talked about the various growth plans you gave my client during the fourteen, fifteen school year, didn't you?
I've discussed them with her, yes.
And my client successfully completed those growth plans, didn't she?
Two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, yes.
Yeah, so, so, so that, when you say, well, school board, she's had a long history, that she's had a history of showing growth, isn't that correct?
She has not had a history of showing growth, she has shown history, she has a history of not being able to sustain the growth that she shows.
But ma'am, let's go to the evaluation you gave her at the end of the fourteen, fifteen school year, and that's exhibit number nine, school district's exhibit number nine. And, and you just testified under oath that she's not shown growth, didn't you say that?
I said she was unable to sustain the growth, to sustain it.
To sustain?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so in the fourteen, fifteen school year, you gave her her first growth plans, and my client successfully completed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then in, then in well, I can't read these copies, that, then let me go to my copies, that go to my client's fourteen, fifteen evaluation, that's behind exhibit number nine.
Okay.
And, and go with the one, mine's not bait stamped, that's the reason why I'm not giving you a bait stamped number, and, and go to the June eleventh, two thousand fifteen evaluation?
Yes.
And you'll agree with me, that's my client's fourteen, fifteen evaluation?
Yes.
And given about a year ago.
Yes.
And you did it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, 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 and read again for us, the first sentence, under recommendations for professional growth.
And I'm going to try my best to read it because I'm, I'm kind of blind, as a second-year school counselor, I have contacts on, but thank you, as a second year's-
No, I'm sorry, under recommendations.
Oh, under recommendations, okay, I am confident that Ms. Jefferson will continue to grow professionally.
And, and, and let me stop you there, first sentence, you've read it. So she had shown professional growth?
Yes.
And in fact, you were confident a year ago she would continue to show growth?
Yes.
And where in this document did you say, but she doesn't sustain it?
Well, in the recommendations that I made, that I made very explicit, because I wanted to make sure that she sustained it, the word sustain is not there.
Right, 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 in fact, you say that you're confident she's going to continue to grow.
Yes.
And you'll agree with me that sustain and growth isn't?
No.
No?
No. She did not show that.
And you didn't tell her in this evaluation she didn't show that, did you?
That, did she, that she could sustain growth? I, I'm not understanding, is that what you're asking me? Ask me the question again, please, I want to make sure I answer it correctly.
That in the fourteen, fifteen evaluation, you didn't notify my client in writing that you've shown growth, but you can't sustain it.
I did not use those words, yes. I did not use those words, yes, sir. You're correct.
And you already agree with me that a growth plan is a good tool to help a professional certified employee become better?
Yes.
And you'll also agree that, not to mention it is state law to evaluate annually a professional certified employee's performance, but it's state law for a reason, to help employees become better?
Yes.
And it's your job as a building principal and also appraiser that, you know, in these evaluations, to point out the good things and the not-so-good.
Yes.
And you'll agree with me that the 14-15 evaluation's not under PDAAS, that it's not rated as either proficient, exceeds expectation, or low expectation?
Right.
That you will agree with me, though, that that's a good evaluation?
No, I cannot agree with you on that.
Well, you agree it's at least proficient?
Without having a rubric, I cannot just make a guess as to what this would be considered proficient or not proficient.
Then at least you'll let the board decide whether or not you gave her sufficient warning to indicate, "Wow, you're not doing a good job. I may not renew you next year."
Yes.
Right, okay, and now, now on a, you talked about Exhibit Number 10, that I think bait stamped 49, that's what my notes say, that's that, now by the way, that, the day that you sent Mr. Cale that February 11 nonrenewal letter, that the district placed my client on leave, a missed leave, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, go to your black notebook, Exhibit Number 13, Number 10. So, is that a letter from Mr. Cale to Pamela Jefferson dated February 11?
Yes.
And advising her that she's immediately being placed on leave with pay, pending intended proposal for nonrenewal?
Ms. Ortiz, you have 45 minutes remaining. You asked to be notified. Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so even though that your growth plan, that the one my client signed January 20, 2016, gave my client that until February 26 to show growth, that you proposed nonrenewal on February 11, and she was removed from your campus February 11, isn't that true?
I want to say it was February 11.
Well, that's a date of Mr. Cale's letters.
Okay, yes, so yes, February 11.
So you'll agree with me, my client could, that tried to successfully complete this growth plan, the one ending February 26?
No, because she had already been given multiple opportunities on other growth plans.
So then, and why did you give her until February 26 on this growth plan? And why give her a growth plan at all? I don't understand.
Because, again, she was struggling with sustaining her performance of being an effective counselor for students.
Doesn't the law allow this board to give notice of proposed nonrenewal? 10 days before the last day of instruction, that this board could have given proposed nonrenewal as late as May 25, isn't that true?
I don't know.
Well, if that is true, Mr. Eichelbaum, the school lawyer, will I'm sure explain that to the board, and let's assume that's true, wouldn't you agree with me that to give my client the rest of February, March, April, and most of May to try to save her job and her career?
I cannot agree with you on that because she had been given multiple opportunities to improve. This is her third year as a counselor at our school.
Yeah, but I'm still confused. Why did you give her such a good evaluation at the end of her second year?
Because like you stated, my job is to make sure that I support my staff to make them better and become the best. So I always, I wanted to give her what she was doing well, but also address the areas where she needed growth.
Yeah, but she did sustain growth.
No, she did not.
She completed the growth plan, the age growth plan you gave her in the 14-15s.
The first growth plan, yes.
Okay, now, earlier, over my objection, the board heard testimony about my client's performance as a classroom teacher years ago at Hutchinson Junior High. Remember that testimony? Now, when did you start as building principal at Lynn Hill?
2013-2014 school year.
When?
August 2013.
And you interviewed along with a committee, you interviewed my client, didn't you?
Yes.
And you and your committee hired my client?
Yes.
And so whatever deficiencies you're trying now to point out to the board, you hired my client?
Yes.
You think my client's a bad-
No.
And you reprimanded her. That because she was late for sergeant?
Yes.
And we know ever since 1990, school districts in the state of Texas have placed a lot of emphasis on state mandated testing.
Yes.
And that's role-playing.
Yes.
And what excuse did my client give you?
Her daughter had missed the school bus.
You think that's true?
I believe her, yes.
And she was how late?
She arrived at 8:20 because I was waiting at the door.
I'm sorry, what?
She arrived at 8:20. She claims 8:15, so we agree to disagree.
And the testing began 20, 30 minutes later?
Yes.
So thankfully, she was, or she arrived for the test?
She arrived for the administration of the test, but not-
And whether you agree or not, she at least interpreted your admonishment, and you're telling her not only how to be a school counselor, but also how to be a parent.
She interpreted, she interpreted it that way, but that was not my intent.
Right, right, and I believe that, but you'll agree that a lot about this case that is communication and/or miscommunication?
Yes.
And she's interpreted things correctly, but she's also interpreted things incorrectly?
Yes.
Is it possible so have you? At least possible?
I don't know. Just in the way she's treated me and other staff members, it's very difficult for me to agree that it's, that I have interpreted things incorrectly when the way she talks to me is so aggressive and disrespectful and just insulting.
Okay, so, 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 there's not a doubt in your mind, you're right and she's wrong?
Yes.
Pass.
All right, before you ask any questions, let's get another time check for everyone.
So 68 minutes?
No, you have 54 minutes.
Or 51 for me.
Yes, meaning you would, I'm sorry, you would have 58 minutes.
Yeah, hey, Mr. Eichelbaum, I'm not asking you for that. I will try to do it myself, but I've utilized 51, and Ms. Mooney's utilized?
Yeah, yeah.
No, 60, you've used 68 minutes.
No, I used 68.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not surprised you think so.
Go ahead. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Morales, when counsel was questioning you, he presented growth plans as an opportunity for growth for employees, correct?
Yes.
But we don't put employees that are already doing their jobs on growth plans just as an opportunity to get better, do we?
Right.
And in all fairness, Ms. Jefferson didn't complete one of her growth plans. To be completely fair, because as counsel points out, she was on leave before the other one expired.
Yes.
Okay, after, you did say that she was showing growth in your commendations in that 2015 evaluation, correct?
Yes.
But also, to be fair, you had a number of recommendations for Ms. Jefferson as well that were not so positive?
Right.
Correct? Weighing on her performance of her job duty?
Yes.
So while you were hopeful she might one day excel, she was not doing that at this time, correct? Okay, and between the growth plan that was, began on January 21, 2016, as counsel pointed out, and ended February 26, and the February 11 letter to Scott Cale. So between that January 21 and the February 11, that was a period of three weeks, correct?
Yes.
And was Ms. Jefferson showing growth during those three weeks? Was she mastering that plan?
No, she was struggling.
So when you reported to Mr. Cale that she was struggling, she had just failed to complete the last growth plan, and then the subsequent growth plan, she wasn't showing any improvement?
Right.
And just to be clear, when you did hire Ms. Jefferson, were you privy to all of her conference summaries?
No, I was not.
In fact, you spoke to Mr. Tapia, correct?
I did, and he never mentioned conference summaries. He never mentioned concerns with communication.
Pass the witness.
Current time? Thank you. Any further questions for this witness? All right, may this witness step down? Thank you. Subject to recall?
Yeah, didn't look at my notebook, I don't need it.
You're welcome to look at it if you'd like.
You can. We'll take a break.
Okay, if you choose to look at it later, you're welcome to. Does the administration have any further witnesses?
I do. I would like to call Nell Fielding, and she has been-
All right, we'll take a two-minute break to stretch while we go and get the witness. Ma'am, are you ready to start?
I am.
All right, then, if you would, again, call your witness.
Okay, I'd like to call Nell Fielding.
All right, feel free to approach, and the court reporter will swear you in. I want to thank you for your patience as you've waited to be a witness.
I do.
Ms. Fielding, can you please state your name for the record?
Nell Fielding.
And what is your position with the district?
I am Director of Guidance and Counseling.
Okay, did you assist Ms. Morales with the summative evaluations just to the extent, or to what extent, if any, did you assist her with the summative evaluations?
I showed her the domains that counselors are trained under, the competencies.
And where did you derive those domains?
They come from the TEA guidelines based off the Education Code.
Okay, and how about the growth plans? How did you, did you assist with the growth plans at all?
When I provided those domains to Ms. Morales, we identified the domain that she wanted Ms. Jefferson to work on, and then it was developed from that.
Okay, and did you assist substantively with any of the growth plans?
There were some things that I assisted with, but I didn't have a great involvement beyond providing the domains and then identifying the area that needed work.
Okay. Can you define for us, this word has come up a lot in the documents, what is your definition as a counselor of a student being in crisis?
Anytime a student is disrupting the learning environment in the classroom, that could be considered that student's in crisis there. It could be a very outward outburst. Particularly with younger students, it exhibits itself that way. With older students, it may be a student in the corner crying, and then that disrupts the learning environment because the other student's more interested in what's causing that student to cry than to be attending to academics.
As a counselor, do you only have an obligation to intervene if the student is actually in crisis as you've defined it?
No, students will exhibit a need for intervention in a lot of different ways. It could be that they're not academically successful. So if the teacher determines it's not an academic need, but there's some other things that are causing that student to not be successful, then that would be a reason to refer to the counselor.
If a student was suspended for making threats against their teacher, and their mom requested counseling, would that be something that you feel like you could assist the student with?
Objection, she has been designated as an expert. And without that designation, who would this expect?
Response? Let's stop the clock. Response?
My response, I guess I can couch it differently and ask, as her supervisor, if that's something that you would expect her to do?
Yes, and there has been direction-
Hold on, let's see.
All right, rephrase the question, that's fine.
I'll rephrase.
Sustain.
So would you expect a counselor, as the counselor supervisors, to, or counselor supervisor, to deal with that issue?
Yes.
Okay, and would it be appropriate to say, "That student needs therapy, and I can't provide anything on campus for that student?"
Counselors are not therapists and really cannot make that judgment call, in my opinion.
Hold on, so she shouldn't even have said, "The student needs therapy," in the first place? Made that judgment call?
That would not be something that I would have assessed just from, because he did this, then he needs therapy. I don't think that would be a judgment call a counselor is trained to make.
Okay, and in that scenario that I gave you, would you expect your counselor to deal with that student given that set of facts on campus, as well as saying they need outside therapy?
Counselors are responsible for helping students with any of those behavioral needs. And even if they're receiving outside therapy, or counseling, or services, professional services, counselors are responsible for helping students to work with their behavior on the campus.
So would there ever be a situation where you would say, "I can't help you, but I'll refer you to UTA. You clearly need help, but it's beyond my scope," if a student was exhibiting behavioral issues?
Students may need therapy beyond what a counselor is trained to do, but if a student is exhibiting behavioral issues on the campus, it is a responsibility of the counselor to continue to work with them.
what would be considered at capacity, such that a counselor couldn't see any more students?
I've never had a counselor say they were at capacity.
So that should never be a statement that's made in this district? Is that your position?
That would be my assessment.
Would you have any concerns of the student who was told, or the teacher of the student who was told that the counselor's at capacity was engaging in self-harm threats?
We have very strict or very clear guidelines about how counselors and the staff is to handle a suicide ideation. And they're immediately referred to the counselor, the counselor sees them. We have a little assessment that we do, just to kind of judge how serious they are. I mean, are they going home and having an op, and they're going to do this? Or are they in the beginning stages of a plan, whoever that is? And we always notify the- they in the beginning stages of a plan, whoever that is? And we always notify the parent. That is an immediate response from the campus, from the teacher, to the administrator, to the counselor.
And to say, I'm, I'm at capacity, but I'll send him over to UTA, that wouldn't be appropriate in that situation?
That's not appropriate.
Okay, and if a student's bawling in the front office because they got sent to the principal, is that just a natural consequence that the student should deal with, or is that a behavior that a counselor would be expected to intervene and help with?
I would think that they would be expected to intervene. You don't know why that student is reacting that way. If you had a conversation with a student, it may be that, if I get in trouble at school, I'm going to get a beating at home. Or, I fear that because when I get in trouble at home, here's the consequences, is this going to be the same consequences with me when I go into that AP's office? That child may not know what's going to happen. So if there is a caring adult there who would talk with that student and help to calm them down and say, you know, here's what it's going to look like, and I'm going to help you through this. But until you have that conversation, you don't know.
So it wouldn't be appropriate to leave a student standing there bawling in the office as the counselor and look at him?
No.
There was some talk in Ms. Jefferson's documentation about, well, I don't know why everyone's complaining about my guidance lessons, because I just, I just present the one that the district makes me present. Is that accurate? Does the district give a canned presentation?
No, we do. In our counselor meetings, we demonstrate guidance lessons, and that's part of the training for new counselors, and to, a refresher for all the other counselors. And it's a sharing of information. Counselors present differently. It's like when I was a teacher, all the math teachers may be teaching the same math lesson, but it's going to look different from teacher to teacher, so we give them options. We have a framework in the district, but we don't have a prescribed, here is how you teach communication skills, here is how you teach goal-setting, here is how you teach planning. We have never presented a plan like that. It's a framework, and here are all the options, here are the resources. You have to choose a lesson to teach.
Okay. There was an incident in January 2016 where you were implicated, I'll say, in not providing feedback, and so Ms. Jefferson claimed that that was the reason that she wasn't timely in following a directive by providing a guidance plan to her, to her principal as requested. So how do you respond to that?
And, and I may not have responded to that email in a timely manner. That sometimes happens. But we, at the beginning of that year, presented the Live Binder that holds the counselor handbook. In that handbook is an outline of guidance, curriculum, and resources, and it also dictates what we're teaching. There are seven components from TEA that counselors are supposed to teach. So like in the month of October, we teach good decision-making, because that's the red ribbon week and anti-bullying month. So we have those guidelines so that across the district, every counselor's teaching the same thing at the same time, but it's going to look different from campus to campus, based on what the campus needs are, and-
So you say it's going to look different from campus to campus. So first of all, let's take back what you said. Ms., you said you provided at the beginning of that year all that information to Ms. Jefferson. So she should have had that information already, correct?
Right.
So her statement that it was because you weren't responsive, you already provided her everything you were, you would have provided her, correct?
Right, and we can-
Sustain.
Did you, did you provide Ms. Jefferson-
Yes, that information had been provided. We previewed it being online. Before that, had a, a printed version, but we went to online, so they, it was always accessible and easy to update. And then in our October 15th meeting, we revisited that of that year, and told them again how to get into the Live Binder. Here's what's, what's in the Live Binder, and that includes the guidance framework.
Okay, so the second thing you said is it's going to look different from campus to campus. So am I to understand that each campus should have their own guidance lesson? Lessons, plans all drawn up already?
Yes, and we encourage counselors in August to set up that plan for their campus.
You encouraged it in August?
Mm-hmm.
So there's no excuse for January into the school year not having a guidance plan?
I have never created a guidance plan for a campus.
And Ms. Jefferson, as part of her relief, has asked to stay with the district but to be transferred from Ms. Morales. Do you think that if transferred, she would be an effective counselor on another campus?
No.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right, before you, let's get the time again. Ms. Ortiz, you've used fifty-one of your ninety. Yes. Please proceed.
Ms. Fielding, my name is Daniel Ortiz. You and I haven't ever met.
No.
That you're Director of Counseling Services?
Guidance and Counseling, yes.
Guidance and Counseling.
Mm-hmm.
And, and are you my client's direct supervisor?
No.
And, of course, I represent Pamela Jefferson. And that's a yes. Court reporters taking everything down. That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. And you know Pamela Jefferson?
Yes.
And you know her because, because she served as a counselor at Lynn Hale the last three school years?
Yes.
That, that you've met with her once, one-on-one?
Yes.
November 2014, of the 14, 15 school year?
Yes.
And, and why did you meet with her?
She contacted me because she indicated she was having difficulty in her relationship with her principal.
And, and, and so she reached out?
Yes, she did.
That, that you didn't fault her?
No, no, that's, that, to me, that's a positive thing.
Sure, sure. It's a, that it's at least acknowledged, and there's an issue.
Mm-hmm.
And she's-
I'm sorry, please verbalize your answer.
Yes.
And, and that was November of the 14, 15 school?
Yes.
And, and, and then on a question from counsel, you admitted that you assisted the building principal with respect to my client's evaluations and also growth plans?
Not her evaluation, but on, with a growth plan. With a growth plan, not an evaluation.
Well, which ones?
The one growth plan that I was invited to have input.
Which is that?
And that, I guess that was January of-
Ma'am, I'm asking you, I'm not asking someone-
I'm not, I'm not sure of the exact date.
So what school year? Thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen?
I believe it was fourteen, fifteen.
Okay. And, and, and you understand my client successfully completed both growth plans, don't you?
I do not know, because I was not informed of that.
And, and did you ever observe my client, that Adlin Hale did her work?
No.
A bit ago, you testified, well, well, no one asked you if you recommended nonrenewal my client, did they? It's not part of your job, is it?
No.
So, so, so you didn't recommend to Superintendent Cabasos, or to Mr. Cale, or to the building principal, that you think the district ought to nonrenew my client?
No.
And, 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 and you're not suggesting, you have an opinion one way or the other, do you?
When I was asked the question, I had an opinion.
And you were asked a question about whether, if she transferred? I'm not asking you that question.
Yes.
No one ever asked you about nonrenewal, did they?
No.
That, now what's the purpose of a growth plan?
For a couns-, well, for any, a growth plan is to grow in your profession and become more proficient.
That, 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 you've been an educator how long?
Twenty-one years.
You worked as a teacher?
I was a teacher and then a counselor.
How long did you teach?
Five years.
You were evaluated every year?
Not every year.
Well, well, you'll agree with me, will you not? Evaluations are a really good tool to help a teacher know the good things and or not so good things about that teacher's performance.
Yes.
And you'll also agree, a growth plan's an excellent tool to help a professional certified employee grow.
Yes.
And if, did you give growth plans?
I have not created a growth plan.
You understand growth plans, don't you?
Yes, I do.
And, and if a growth plan indicates that an employee's on it from January 1, 2016, until January 30, 2016, that you ought to give them that full thirty-one day, shouldn't, to grow, or not grow?
Yes.
And, and to shorten that thirty days would be unfair, wouldn't it?
Yes.
That, 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 will you agree with, you know, let's look at my client's 14, 15 evaluation. That's marked as the school district's Exhibit Number Ten, I think.
In which book?
No, Number Nine, in the small white book. That's school district Exhibit Number Nine. And, and, and look at Bates stamped, well, yeah, Bates stamp forty-five. Is that my client's, Mr. Akabom? This white notebook and mine are a little different, but, but let's look at, at, at my client's 14, 15 evaluation, and, and it's dated up on top, June 11, 2015. You see that?
Yes.
Okay. And, and, and you're familiar with the, for school counselors' evaluations?
Yes.
And they're not rated like, like PDAS evaluations, or exceed, proficient, below expectation.
Correct.
That you'll agree with me that this is, that is at least proficient, if not better.
Well, I see that there were some commendations, some commendations, there were some current, some concerns, and some recommendations.
Right, right, and, and read that, that first sentence, and, under recommendations for professional growth.
For professional growth, okay.
Read it out loud for us, please.
I'm having a little hard time seeing this. It, it's pretty blurry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different copy than my copy. Yeah.
I believe you're reading where it says, may I read it?
Yeah, yeah, but, but, but the problem I have is the copy that I see she has is very hard to read. Mine's clear. I'm, it's all marked up.
This one is not clear.
Yeah, 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 no.
This one's not clear.
Now, can you read the first sentence here?
Yeah. "I am confident that Mrs. Jefferson will continue to grow professionally. To this end, it is recommended that she continue to do the following in an effort to meet students' needs."
Yes.
Okay. Then, then take a look, I'm, that I'm on a very short time here, okay? Jumping around. Take a look at the school district Exhibit Number Nine, that first growth plan, that the one, that, that the one, that intervention plan period, one twenty-one, sixteen through two twenty-six, sixteen?
Yes, go ahead.
Is that under ten?
At the Bates stamp. Thank you. That Bates stamp forty-nine and fifty after, after tab ten.
I have it.
And on the upper right-hand corner, the date of this growth plan, January twenty?
Yes.
And second page, Bates stamp fifty, that, that my client and the building principal signed it January twenty?
Yes.
And, and go back to Bates stamp forty-nine, intervention plan period one twenty-one, sixteen through, through, uh, February twenty-six, sixteen?
Yes.
And, and you'll agree with me, my client given, until February twenty-six, that to complete successfully or unsuccessfully, that this growth plan.
Yes.
And that, that to cut her short of that would be arbitrary and also capricious. To, 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 after giving her that, that time period, and, and then deciding, I'm putting her on leave February 11. That would be arbitrary and also capricious, wouldn't it? Then unless my client did something ugly, and let's assume my client did, okay?
We're assuming she didn't.
Right, yes, ma'am.
So I would say yes.
Right, so, and, and educators aren't supposed to be arbitrary and capricious, are they?
No.
And isn't that what education's all about, to teach people not to be that way?
We teach children that, yes. It's our job to teach students that.
And you would hope this board, would hope every single employee would also strive for that, too. Wouldn't you agree?
Would you restate that?
Not to be arbitrary and capricious.
Okay, yes.
All right, let's, let's do the time again. Are there any questions from the administration? All right, pass the witness. Do both parties have any further need for this witness? Or may we release her? All right, let me just ask you a question before you go. Exhibit Ten, if everyone would turn to Exhibit Ten. The board has asked a question, and you may not be able to answer this, but you'll see that Bates label number forty-nine says professional growth plan at the top.
Yes.
And then, two pages later, there's something that says intervention plan for counselor in need of assistance. And the question from the board, if you know the answer, is, is there a difference between those titles that has any significance?
I think it's just different verbiage for the same act or plan.
Okay. Do either of you have any further questions of this witness based upon my question and that answer?
No.
All right. Thank you for coming today. May we release her from the rule?
Yes.
All right, you are now released from the rule. That means, if you wish, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the hearing, but if you would prefer, you can leave, and no one will hold it against you.
Thank you.
All right.
You want me to recall?
All right. The administration still has nine minutes. Do you have any further witnesses at this time?
The administration rests. This time subject to cross.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Ortiz, you may call your first witness.
Uh, I will. We're calling Jefferson. But can I ask for a very short?
Of course. Let's take a five-minute recess. Everyone is back. Ms. Jefferson, we are back on the record. Let me remind you, you're still under oath.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ortiz, you're, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Akabom. Let's go to the black notebook, your exhibits, and, Mr. Akabom, I have, how much time do I have?
You've used sixty-two nineties of your time.
Twenty-eight minutes. Can you wait after twenty minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That, now let's very briefly talk about the exhibits that you presented to us, okay? And, and Exhibit One A, is that a true and correct copy of your Texas educator certificate?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and the probationary period began August 2007. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That, that, that when you- That, that, that when you went to college, that, did you go to college to, to, to be a teacher?
No, sir.
And, and that what, and that your degree was in what?
Criminal justice.
Uh, that, that did you go to an alternate, uh, certification program?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and was that during the 2007, 2008 school year?
Um, I went to Ecap, I believe from, I want to say June, um, 2007 to August 2007.
And, and then exhibit 1B, that, is that true and correct copy of your resume?
Yes, sir.
And, and that what year did you finish Atlanta High School?
In 1995.
And, and that when did you receive your, your bachelor's degree?
In December 1999.
So, so took you, you about four years?
Yes, sir.
And, and that does accurately reflect your, your jobs before beginning, uh, as a teacher with the district?
Yes, sir.
And, and ever been fired, any of these places?
No, sir.
That, that, uh, that some of these jobs were during college, were they not?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and that exhibit 1C, what does that reflect briefly?
Uh, the professional development that I've had.
That, with Arlington Independent School District?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that seems substantial, is, is it substantial or is it normal?
Um, I would say that it's in between substantial and normal.
That, that, uh, and then exhibit number two, uh, that, that, is that copies of, of cards given to you by fellow educators?
Yes.
And, and, and that, why did you feel the need to present this document?
Because it was shown that I couldn't get along with people and, um, like a negative view of me.
Shown that or claimed that?
It wa, it was claimed that in the affidavits.
Objection leading, she said shown, he suggested claimed.
It was shown in the affidavits.
Can I get a room?
Alright, uh, well, it's been asked and answered, we'll just move on to the next question, but I would, please listen to each other, thank you.
Go ahead.
It was shown in the affidavits, um, by the people, um, that I was not, um, a nice person and that no one could depend on me, um, as such.
Okay, and, and then 3A, is that, uh, the timeline of events during 13-14 school year?
3A?
Yeah, 3A.
Yes, sir.
And, and that was your first year with, with Lynn Hale?
Yes, sir.
And, and that, and that, when did you receive a guidance tech?
Um, that year my guidance tech was leaving, she got a job in the fine arts. Um, so I think she left in September, early October, and I didn't get a guidance tech until January of the next, the beginning of the new semester.
And, and that what does a guidance tech do in a relationship, ship to your office?
Um, she's supposed to be helping me with, um, things that, such as guidance and testing.
So, so your first year as a school counselor, you didn't have, uh, permanent tech until January of 14?
Uh, it was January, I believe, 15.
That, did you complain about that?
No.
That you filed grievance over that?
No.
That, did you, uh, throw a fit, resort?
No, in fact, I did all the testing by myself.
That 3B, is that a timeline of the 14-15 school year?
Yes, sir.
That, that the growth plan's given to you during that school year, did you complete them?
Yes, sir.
That successfully, unsuccessfully?
Successfully.
And, 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 you heard the building principal testify, that's all, correct?
Yes.
And, and the, how did she communicate that to you?
Well, during the growth plan, I was supposed to meet with her almost every week, um, and put envelopes of my recorded log time and what I did from day to day. Um, during that time, we met a couple of times, the growth plan had expired, and then it was, I guess, days later, and she said, oh, by the way, you finished your growth plan, she really didn't meet with me consistently.
Okay, well, well, you don't fault for that, do you?
I don't.
Yeah, you didn't call her supervisor to complain?
No.
And, and that what's this business, someone said, I forget who, that, that you have a, a closer than the normal relationship with Mr. Hill, Michael Hill?
Uh, no, sir.
Objection, that was never, even insinuated.
No, sir, um, Ms. Morales referred that, um, I stated to talk to Mr. Hill and that I didn't want to meet with her. That was from the October 20 something, the last week in, of October in the 2014-15 school year, and it was relating to the drug and eventualist that is a part of the district, Mr. Eric Schmidmer, and she was calling me and asking me, why did you, um, schedule someone to meet on the campus and you didn't have my authorization? Um, I did not know about this, and, um, we need to meet, and I was like, I sent you emails. Um, the teachers knew, Mr. Schmidmer knew, he showed up, the teachers showed up, so I don't know why she wasn't aware of it, but that, that's the situation that she's talking about.
The, the two HR people that gave affidavits, uh, that Bea Foster and, uh,
Cam Byers.
And Ms. Byers, that, that they testified that, that during these meetings, that you were a bullet.
Yes.
That, that until you received the affidavits, that, did you have a clue about that?
I didn't.
Uh, uh, the, 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 uh, the, there was testimony about your first school year, the 13-14, that you were late, uh, that played for the STAR test.
Mm-hmm.
That a yes?
Yes.
And, and then Ms. Morales testified a bit ago, and, and I didn't make notes, that you arrived at, at about 8:00?
She said 8:20.
Uh, 8:20, she said you say 8:15?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and the test, uh, was given at 9:00 AM?
Um, I believe so.
That, now what time should you have been?
Um, contractually, I'm supposed to be there from 8:05 to 3:35.
Yeah, but we're talking STAR test.
STAR test.
And, 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 and that as school counselor, aren't you a test, a test consultator?
Yes, I am.
So, so how many days a year do you give a STAR test? About how many?
I would say maybe nine or 10.
Well, you'll agree with me, that those are nine or 10 pretty important days.
Yes.
Well, and now, what happened, you know, your daughter, which daughter was it?
It was my oldest daughter.
And, and what happened?
Um, she went to the bus stop, and sometimes, um, when you ride the bus, they'll come earlier than the anticipated time, so she went to the bus stop, and then she came in there as I was getting dressed and said, Mom, I missed the bus.
Did you cause that, contribute that, anything you could have done, not done, to avoid that?
No.
Well, were you uptight about her being late?
I was concerned that she nee- I, I was concerned that she needed to be at school.
And, now what did that make you do?
So I, um, she went, goes to Ben Barber, um, and we stay off of Cooper and Sublet, so I have to take her to Ben Barber in traffic, which takes around, I don't know, 30 minutes round trip.
And, and that you arrived about 20 minutes or so late?
10 minutes, yes.
Did you apologize?
Um, I don't know if I apologized or not.
And if you didn't apologize, you weren't flaunting you being late, were you?
No, absolutely not.
Did you feel good about being late?
No, I didn't.
And, and, and what was it about Ms. Morales telling you, uh, whatever she told you that, that upset you, uh, with respect to parenting?
Because she said to me, I, I think I went to her office to, um, ask her if I could take off after the STAR test was completed. And then she said, hey, by the way, why were you late for STAR? And I was like, well, my daughter had missed the bus, and then she said, um, as a parent, you should ensure that your daughter was up. As a parent, um, you have to make sure you take care of those things to something to that, to that sort.
Okay, okay, let's, you know, kind of move forward quickly to February 11.
Okay.
We've seen, and we've talked about the building principal's letter to Mr. Kale, dated February 11.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and that were you placed on leave that day?
I was.
And, why were you placed on?
They didn't give me a reason other than that Ms. Morales proposed nonrenewal my contract.
And, and was there something that you could have done to avoid being placed on leave?
Um, I don't think so.
Well, well, weren't you given an option to either, um, that resign?
Objection leading.
Or be nonrenewed?
Um-
Hold on, hold on, there's an objection, what is your objection?
Objection leading.
Response?
Uh, uh, she's correct, let me rephrase.
Alright.
Now, was there something you could have done to avoid being placed on leave?
Well, um, when I came there, Mr. Kale asked me, did I know why I was there, and I told him no. And he was saying that it was a very serious matter, he explained to me, um, that Ms. Morales was proposing nonrenewal, um, and what that meant, that I would need to, for further appointment, check that, um, I was nonrenewed. Um, he wanted me to try to get my rep on the line, and at that time, she couldn't be con-
Your rep, representative?
Uh, Ms. Hudson from TSTA, and the attorney, they weren't available. So he was saying that I could resign to prevent having to be, um, needing to check the nonrenewal on my future applications.
Uh, that skip and over, uh, still in the black notebook, that exhibit number 5A, is that a rebuttal to the walkthrough date February 2?
Yes.
And, and that 5B is a response to the conference summary?
Yes.
And, uh, and, and then 5C is, uh, response to the reprimand that's dated February, February 5-16?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, 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 and the rest of exhibit 5 are responses, rebuttals, that to the various reprimands given?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that, that, skip over to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, now, to exhibit number 7A, that, is that a statement from, from Ms. Alba?
Yes, it is.
Who is that?
She, uh, when I first came, she was a third grade teacher, but currently, she was a first grade teacher.
And still works at Lynn Hale?
Um, she, I, I believe she resigned as of this school year.
And, and this statement, this statement's written about you and dated June 13 of 16?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then 7B, is that, uh, a statement from Karen Wood Middleton?
Yes, sir.
Dated June 15 of this year?
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
Um, she is a C's teacher, she was a C's teacher at our campus, but she has another position in the district.
And, 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 and then finally, exhibit 7C, that statement for Hazel Gooden?
Yes, sir.
That's dated, uh, June 20 of 15?
Yes, sir.
That, 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 that without reading each one of them, are these saying positive things about you?
Yes, sir.
That does appear to these people that you're difficult to get along with?
No, sir.
Unprofessional?
No, sir.
Combatant?
No, sir.
Uh, that, and then let's go to, uh, to, uh, exhibit number 13. That, is that a school district posting dated June 20, 2016?
Yes, sir.
Posting your position?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that's a little presumptive?
I do.
Okay, excuse me, where are you?
Exhibit number 13, black notebook, my client's exhibit. Well, no, no.
Alright, let's stop the clock.
Yeah, I, I, I brought some extra ones, you said you had them?
They might be right here.
They're in those envelopes, those additional, um, okay.
Let's see if this is-
They're envelopes?
Okay. Here you go. And if you'll make sure that one is in, I don't need one, make sure you have enough for everyone else first.
They're probably, we had, we had a wide, it's in the wide envelope we had earlier.
And is the, is that document, is it in there, the one that's going to go to the court reporter?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, and you're on which number? Thank you.
13.
13. The board would turn to 13, and then, Mr. Ortiz?
That, is that a job posting for the council position Lynn Hale Elementary School dated June 20, 2016?
Yes, sir.
And do you think that's somewhat presumptive that, that administration assumes that, that you're being fired before the board rules?
Yes, sir.
That attached to that, is that a job description of your position?
Yes, sir.
Now, what's the difference between, uh, uh, an elementary school counselor and an LPC? What's an LPC?
An LPC is a licensed professional counselor, that's where you can go see them for a range of things, um, and they are licensed by the state of Texas to practice therapies and come from different therapy approaches.
And the, the, the director of counseling a bit ago testified that, that, uh, school counselor is in no position to determine if a child needs a therapist or not, did you hear that, Dexter?
I did.
So board tonight, did she ever share that with you?
No, sir.
Board tonight, anybody ever share that with you with the district?
No.
Um, that UTA, that, that, I get the idea administration is, is suggesting that to the board that, that you're somewhat lazy, and, and you like to get to work late, leave early, take long lunches, and, and not do your work, and refer everything UTA?
That's not true.
And why do you refer students to UTA?
Um, in, in our counseling handbook, it says that if we feel as though the kids would benefit for something more than what we are at liberty to give them, we refer them to UTA, we have a referral form.
District trains you to do that?
Yes.
That, 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 until the district proposes nonrenewal, anyone ever say, stop doing that, stop sending kiddos to UTA?
No.
And no one ever did that?
No.
Yeah, and, 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 and you understand that school district protocol with respect to suicidal ideations?
Yes, sir.
Now, what is?
Um, whenever a kid say that they want to kill themselves, or the teacher believes that, we have to do a suicide assessment. Uh, once we do a suicide assessment, we ask questions, it's three categories, and it's low, I believe, medium and high. And, um, you have to tally it based on the student's response to see if their, if the risk is high or low. And, um, from there, you always contact the parent, um, and let them know the situation. If it is high, um, you ask the parent to come and get their child, and there's a form that explains the directions to the parent.
I didn't ask the director, I didn't ask the building principal this question because I can safely assume the answer. Let me ask you, do you think children, uh, born into independent schools, this, somehow at risk? Uh, if they're at a school in which your school counts?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, yeah, and, 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 and like I said earlier, that they're trying to paint you as, as a bank. They get in work late, leave early, okay?
You're at 20 minutes. You have to be notified when you're at 20 minutes.
And so I have.
All right, stop the clock, and if you could just calculate. You have eight minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that, 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 do you meet with parents before school, after school?
I have.
Ms. Ortiz, we're, uh, okay, I was just, Ms. Ortiz, we're not going to say, oh my God, the clock has stopped and you can't breathe another word. So finish, finish your train of thought.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cale. Appreciate the treatment. We're almost through. Now, put in the sun, put the bill. Put aside that what the building principal says about you. Put aside what the director said. And that, put aside you're successfully completing the 1415 gold plan, and have a decent evaluation. Do you think you ought to be nonrenewed?
I don't believe that I should be nonrenewed.
Tell the board.
Um, I understand that I'm not a perfect counselor, um, but I do put in work. I, I miss lunch, um, I've stayed late. Um, I come to school every day. I come to school when I take off. Um, I care about kids, and I care about the school district.
Well, do you think, but, 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 but you know this district, lots of districts don't like transferring. The educators, they perceive to be problem children. Do you think you can get along with another supervisor?
I'm sure that I could, yes, sir.
Well, well, will you make, that, will you make an effort?
I, I always make an effort.
And, 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 and even though you've heard the testimony, even though you know the building principal recommended nonrenewal, that tell us as a professional, do you fault anyone here?
The question was, do I fault anyone because Ms. Morales recommended me to be nonrenewed? No, I don't.
And do you agree with her?
I don't agree with her for her saying that I should be nonrenewed. No, I don't agree.
Now, now, you seem to be agreeing that, that to disagree here. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and do you feel you're being professional about it?
Yes, sir.
And she was painting you as, 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 as some kind of beast, that, that some kind of ugly person? That, that, are you, that have you been two different people? Are you different tonight than you have been that the last three school years?
No, sir.
Do you think you have something to give children?
Yes, I do.
You asking the board to consider?
I'm asking the board to consider.
Thank you.
What's the time? Four-ish. All right, cross-examination.
Ms. Jefferson, you're not unique in that you have counseling and, uh, testing responsibilities, are you?
Uh, are you, could you, uh, restate the question?
Well, the majority of elementary schools in AISC have their counselors doing both counseling and testing, uh, duties, correct?
Uh, I don't know if it's the majority, but some schools have a testing facilitator, and a school counselor, and my campus are one of the schools that doesn't, that we have a guidance tech.
There are other schools where counselors do the exact same duties you're doing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And in fact, you've been, uh, you've had all your testing duties removed except for STAR, correct?
Um, that's not necessarily the case. Uh, when I met with Ms. Fielding, I believe that was in November, I think, 2014, um, she was stating to Ms. Morales that I'm only supposed to do STAR. Um, but also you'll see in the, um, it, the exhibits that, um, Ms. Morales, this past school year, we didn't also have a guidance tech, and I was responsible for local testing as well.
And that was a total of one test, wasn't it?
Uh, no, it was not. It was, um, COGAT, uh, which is a big given to third and sixth grade. Um, it was, uh, the curriculum assessments in grades three through six.
It was, the guidance tech had already taken care of that first one you mentioned before she left, had it she?
She had not. She was in the front office, um, and that's one of the things, um, that I would like to say that most of the time she was in the front office serving as backup to the secretary and the clerk, and what-
Objection, let her finish.
Well, she said that's one thing I'd like to say, and-
All right, all right.
Something that had nothing to do with my question.
Okay. Ask your next question.
So, there are other elementary school counselors who have the various, have counseling and testing duties, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Are any of them up for nonrenewal as far as you know?
Uh, I am not aware.
And, uh, in April 2014, when you said Ms. Morales didn't know about the speaker and you didn't know why, that was because you didn't put it on the calendar like you were told, wasn't it?
It was not April. It was October 2014. I didn't have authorization to place the, um, event on the calendar. I didn't have permission. And, um, she was in all the emails.
So you didn't have authorization, but everyone else had authorization to put things on the calendar?
It's the, it's the Hale Events calendar, and only specific people, I believe, have access, but I didn't. I just recently got access, I believe, this school year.
But Ms. Morales told you then that you're to put things on the calendar? She told you to put things on a calendar that you didn't have access to? That's your, that's your position?
Um, during that particular time, I didn't have access.
Wouldn't it have been helpful to not take a personal day on a day when you scheduled a speaker?
My daughter was sick.
Uh, and one of the statements that you mentioned in your support, Ms. Hazel Gooding, she says that she is the speech pathologist assistant, correct?
Um, she is over the speech pathologist that is at our campus.
It says she's the speech pathologist assistant, correct, in seven C, if you read her statement?
Um.
Seven C?
Yes. Okay, so, whatever her position, she's on your campus about once a week, correct? She's not a, she's not on your campus every day?
Um, she's there on, um, Wednesdays, and sometimes it may be more if they have arts and stuff. But it says she's supervising a speech pathologist assistant.
Okay, so she's not on your campus more than once, and maybe more if, if there's something that comes up?
Um, I believe that's correct.
And, uh, Mr. Ortiz mentioned that, um, Nell Fielding never told you that you shouldn't tell students whether or not they need therapy. Isn't that something that you should know as a certified counselor without another counselor having to tell you?
Um, I never told a student that they needed therapy. The conversations were, um, based on what I felt, um, needed to be recommended to UTA, and I would advise the teachers of that, but I never told a student.
Okay, but shouldn't you know whether or not a student, whether or not you can make that assessment as to whether a student needs therapy?
Um, that was given to me under my responsibilities to, to make that. Um, we have, uh, referral forms, um, to UTA, and I'm the counselor, so I was supposed to make that decision.
Okay, but this, Ms. Fielding said that you shouldn't be making the decision as to whether a student needs only therapy and no school counseling, and, and no school counseling, correct? That was your testimony earlier, that Ms. Fielding should have, should have notified you somehow that, about what, whether or not you can tell a student they need therapy?
Um, I don't recall that.
Okay. A- as a professional, well, suffice it to say that as a professional counselor, you should know what you're qualified to say and what you're qualified to not say, without another counselor telling you, correct?
Um, as relating to your question of therapy, I should know what I'm supposed to say, but, um, the therapy was not said to a student. It was said to the teacher.
You just testified that you come to school every day. Do you remember telling your counsel that?
Yes, I do.
Can you turn to the administration's exhibit 21? So this is the new form that the district implemented this year for requesting personal time off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and on the very last page, that's the first date where you were asking for time off. So that first date was October 8, 2015, correct?
Yes.
And flipping to the first page, your most recent request was January 29, 2016.
Yes.
Are you aware that there's 11 requests in there for personal time off between October and January?
Um, I don't know the accurate amount of time. I know that some of these days I did come to work, and what I stated previously, um, just to be on the record, is, is that, um, my personal days-
Well, let's let her answer the question.
On my personal days, sometimes when I am scheduled for personal days, I still come to work.
Okay, so you're claiming you're coming to work all these days?
Um, not all of those days, but some of these days I did. Like, January 29th, I ran out of days on January 28th, I believe. So January 29th, 2016, I was at work.
You ran out of days? So you had to come to work because you had run out of days?
Well, I was letting you know that I didn't take personal leave on that day.
If you ran out of days, then you were taking personal leave, correct?
Um, I believe I get 10 days.
Objection, relevancy, that looking-
She testified earlier that she comes to school every day.
Looking at the school di-
Stop the clock. Go ahead.
That looking at the school district's exhibit number one, the letter proposing nonrenewal, that-
I think this is just cross-examination from previous testimony. I, I agree with you that it is not one of the grounds that she's been proposed for nonrenewal.
Well, it could be failure to fulfill duties or responsibilities. It could be-
All right, all right, well, at this point-
How raw these reasons are.
Well, counsel?
Inefficiency.
Both of you stop. Hold on. You'll both get closing statements to tie it all together. Um, but I think you only have a few more minutes of questions, so let's, let's just finish up the question.
Okay, I'll just pass the witness.
All right, uh, what's the time? There's one minute.
I have four.
You have four, sir. Ish.
The earlier building principal testified that, that at the outset of the, the 1415 school year, and perhaps the 1516 school year, that you spent a lot of time apologizing. Remember that testimony?
Yes, I remember.
And, 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 and since here at this due process here, and we can hear both sides, what's your side?
Um, I never spent time apologizing to her. Um, we would have meetings, like she wanted, I believe, the 1415 school year, she would want to meet with me so that she knew what I was doing the whole year. Um, and I know this past year, the 1415, no, 1516 school year, she wanted to know everything, all my plans, all my lessons. She wanted them to present it to the teachers beforehand, just in case they had a question, um, the referral process and everything. So I did the PowerPoint. I gave her everything that she requested.
Okay, and, and then earlier, the director addressed this, and, and the building principal that did also, that, that talking about a child in the office area, and, and was crying, upset, you were somewhere in that same area, and you just sat there, didn't I?
Mm-hmm.
What's your side?
Well, we were, um, me and my assistant was waiting to meet with Mr. Highland, and there was a parent, me and Wendy Williams, the new guidance tech for this school year, that started, I guess, after Thanksgiving. Um, we were waiting to meet with Mr. Highland in reference to a testing meeting. And so as soon as we come to the office, there was a parent that was requesting to speak to me. So I go back to my office to speak to the parent, and then after speaking to the parent, she wanted to speak to Mr. Highland. So the parent is in the meeting with Mr. Highland, and we were there waiting. Um, the parent took a while, um, I don't know how many minutes it was. And, uh, while we were waiting for Mr. Highland, the student comes in, and she was stomping and like, ooh, like that, like she, like she was, um, mad. Um, and so, um, she went to Mr. Highland's office, and the, the secretary told her that he's in with someone, have a seat. So she had a seat, um, on the bench, and then, um, the secretary tried to say something to her. I don't remember what she said. The guidance tech tried to say something to her, and then after, um, they said something to her, I said, um, I'm gonna give you a few minutes to calm down.
For the record, thou had asked that, for the, for the strike, that name, that student, and, and-
Agreed.
She did it inadvertently.
Understood.
Don't give a name.
Okay.
And, and, and give us a date, approximate date.
Um, I believe that was February 1st of 2016.
Let me just give the court reporter instruction. If you'll just put the word "student" in brackets. Thank you.
That, that, were you being mean towards this child?
No.
Um, um, that, that, that counsel was asking you questions about your leave between this, between October, I think, and maybe January of this past school year? That, do you understand that to be a reason for nonrenewal?
Uh, no, sir.
Has counsel used up his time? All right. Is there any redirect or re-cross? Okay. Are there any questions from the board for this witness? All right, uh, please step, you may step down. Ms. Mooney, I believe you have about 40 seconds, one minute. Do you have any further witnesses?
I have no further.
Wow, okay. All right, um, Mr. Ortiz, I'm sorry, do you rest?
Yes.
Excuse me. Question from Ms. Mays.
Yeah, just for clarification, I just wanted to know what time do you do the morning announcements?
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ortiz, I'm sorry, do you rest?
Yes.
All right, and does the administration rest?
We rest.
All right, um, I'll give, let's take a, a three-minute break in which you guys can have time to prepare your closing statements. How long will you need?
I'd like to five minutes, not take that long.
Yeah, yeah, and, and maybe seven.
All right, well, uh, let's decide, because the administration will have the ability to, um, begin, and then to rebut at the end. So how much time do you think you need, Ms. Ortiz? Because I have to give the same time to the administration, which will go first. All right. Board members, are there any objections to seven minutes for closing argument? All right, then, that's fine. Yes, there's another question?
I just had one more clarifying question on exactly when did the new guidance tech start?
Right after Thanksgiving. I don't have a date. Right after Thanksgiving.
The 15th?
Yes.
And then do you know what the gap was from the previous?
Yes, uh, the, the guidance tech left on December, um, and then, then guidance tech started, um- The guidance tech left on September, and then the guidance tech started after Thanksgiving. However, the guidance tech that took over was already a member of our staff's family engagement rep. And when the guidance tech left, she had taken care of COGAT. The only assessment that Ms. Jefferson had to oversee in the absence of a guidance tech was Day 1. Ms. Wendy Williams was on board, and she immediately overtested and over-sociated.
And Ms. Jefferson, do you have anything to add to that? Assuming Ms. Ortiz is okay with that.
Nice and loud. I did the COGAT for the 2015-16 school year, and also I assisted Ms. Williams with the second administration day.
He's right, he's good.
Okay.
He agreed to disagree on the COGAT, which he did as...
Um, it was by Ms. Morales' request that I oversee to make sure everything's right. So that's why.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Ms. Ortiz, before we began again, you spoke to me about deliberation. Could you go on the record with the deliberation?
That the earlier I requested that Ms. Jefferson wanted the board to deliberate open session, that we've rethought that and allow the board to deliberate closed session.
All right, thank you. We will take a three-minute break at this time and give you the opportunity to prepare your remarks, so that you can make them concise. We're off the record for a second. Counsel, we will now start closing arguments. You're welcome to stand if you feel more comfortable standing, or you can stay seated.
I'll stand. I also respect this. So, thank you for your attention tonight. I know you've been a little, told you at the beginning that we're going to go for all nine grounds for why they were served it. There's the cause of nonrenewal, Ms. Jefferson's contract. We have done just that. If you look at Exhibit 1, you'll see that we've provided ample support for every single one of them. Number one, deficient in pointing out in observation reports and praising value. Well, all you have to do is look at Exhibit 7, which is a great summary of all of the things, all of the documentation from Ms. Jefferson, her time at Carlington High School, had six conference summaries, had eight reprimands. Her 2013, 14, and 14 summatives addressed all kinds of issues, which later bridged into growth plan. She's had three growth plans. And how is it, by the way, arbitrary and capricious for a district to recommend an employee for nonrenewal when she has had all this documentation? How can you argue that with a great face? She just came off failing to complete one growth plan, three weeks into the next growth plan. Let's not make this sound like a reward. This is a great opportunity for someone to excel and to get better. We don't put employees on growth plans if they're doing a job. And so to say that a district is somehow arbitrary and capricious is just completely out of line. When you look at the documentation and what's actually occurred, what has actually been documented on Ms. Jefferson's case, number two and three, failure to fulfill duties or responsibilities, and incompetence, you're deficient in the performance of duties, all you have to do is look at all of the testimonies for her time. So a big theme has been Ms. Jefferson saying, "I don't have time." She doesn't have time for guidance lessons, she doesn't have time for one-on-one counseling, doesn't have time to attend after, can't attend after meetings, after collect curriculars. Ironically, even though testing has been used as the excuse for why there's the documentation, she says she doesn't even have time for testing. And so because of that, all of her duties, December 2014, or all of her testing, does the coordinator, right, were removed, except for STAR. You heard testimony, that takes place in April, maybe mid-June. So you have to ask yourself, why are we continuing to get complaints from students coming up? These are her duty. These are her counseling duties that are not happening, even when removing the testing duties, which by the way, a good majority of all elementary school counselors are doing. We're still not able to get around it. Ms. Jefferson doesn't deal with students during her lunchtime. She won't sign, she won't deal with students with KPD problems, because that's her KPD. That's what he signed up, that's what this teacher has bad classroom advantage for. Well, regardless, shouldn't we still help a student who needs help, regardless of the cause, regardless of if it's an adult defaulting on their responsibility? Shouldn't the counselor still come in and assist a student that needs assistance? You know, and we just see constant passing of the buck. I sent him to UT, sent a student saying that they were going to engage in self-harm, I said that I'm at capacity. This is unacceptable. You want to talk about students who are high-risk. It is unacceptable to say to a student who's high-risk, that I don't have time, I'm at capacity, that's not my area of expertise. You find a way to help that student. That is your primary role. Insubordination, failure to meet standards of professional conduct, well, plenty of examples of that dating all the way back to 2008, so calling Ms. Tuncle, "No, I just talk loud. My mama told me that, or my mom told me that I should speak my mind." These are not things you say to supervisor, to tell your Mr. Copia, the principal, "Now, well, shouldn't you know, you're the principal, shouldn't you know how your supervisor prays things to me?" These are not things that we say. And Ms. Morales alone, "I'm tired of you, you have a problem, you're qualified to do my job, so it's okay that I was late." That statement, something along those lines. Why do I have to report my absence to you? And none of that is anything that we should ever be saying to our supervisors, and it's the very definition of subordinate. And it's not just to Ms. Morales versus Ms. Jefferson, duel or personalities in clash. This is actually, every single supervisor that she's had is making these comments. HR people are making these comments. Their principal Brandon Holland is making these comments. Teachers are making these comments. But to say that, well, this is Morales versus Jefferson is very misguided. That's not the case whatsoever. So if you look through the documentation, I've totaled 21 people in this case, from the clerk, secretary, all the people we've, who have said the same things about Ms. Jefferson. Did they all have something to gain by lying about her? Are they all in some collusion to nonrenew her? Or are they really concerned about students and whether they're getting the services? And that's what you have to ask. So I'm gonna serve time for a rebuttal, but if you look at the evidence, did at all of those nine points with ample evidence, again, we only had to prove one, by 51% of the evidence, very low burden, and we have done that. Thank you.
You have one minute remaining. Hold on just a second.
Pam and I, thank you, Autumn. I actually agree with several things, counsel. No one disputed that nonrenewal determination is a fire. So, yeah, yeah, this is very serious. That is Pam Jefferson different? Aren't we all? One in this room. Pam, born race, small, five pound, very East Texas pound, struggling, single mother, still struggling. Pam's... We all walk different. But that doesn't mean any of them wrong or are fired. I can see how these two didn't get along, didn't relate. The real question is, what are you doing? Well, look at the affidavits. Ms. Mooney's done a wonderful thing. And what I've said and what she said is not evidence. She said, "They proved the case." Everybody, all of the various affidavits in District Exhibit Number 8, all say terrible. Well, look at those affidavits. It's like the same word. Get out of here, guys. They're all very similar. And they all work for the man, that they all are employed with the district, and they don't put the way the wind blows, and don't kid me. Counsel says, "Look at District Exhibit Number 7, documentation review." Well, no one talked about it during our long hearing, you talked about it now, but look at it. And it's throwing the kitchen sink at my head. And signed by the building principal, February 11, 2015. Well, let's look at the real meaning, the real substance. 13-14 school year, first school year, my client, school calendar, she hasn't get a guidance tech, and she hasn't obtained until December. No growth plan. A decent guidance. 14-15 school year, second school year, that she's placed on a goal. And it worked. She successfully completed it. But in a 14-15 school year, June of 15, that she ought to be feeling okay about it, that she's not perfect, and she was told how to improve, and she worked at it, and she showed improvement, and the evaluation, the very last evaluation this school district issued, the 14-15 school year, June 11, 2015, says that made improvement. That's what you want. So, June 11, 2015, we're being told that in the two most important documents that school district give, an evaluation and growth plan, that she's doing okay, not great, but okay. Then in this school year, on September 1 until February 11, that's not many months, to be judged especially, at the ending of the 14-15 school year, that based upon fair, objective documentation, and these people can't twist it, and y'all can't twist it, and she did okay. But, 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 but Ms. Morales had put my client on a growth plan, January 2, and told her she had until February 10, that to either complete it successfully or not. And, you know, that in life, something I've learned a long time ago, that don't know what, say what you mean. The director of council has said it back, it would be arbitrary, capricious, not say what you mean, mean what you say, and give my client until February 26 to make it or not. But she doesn't. February 11, she's recommending nonrenewal, and in the rug is, is most school district that principal recommends nonrenewal, you're not complete, that you're at least at the dignity to continue working, February, March, April, May, who knows? That you could show improvement, and building principal goes, "I made a mistake." But not that, not with my client. My client, Mr. Kelp, put her on leave, the February 11. So judge, jury, executioner, she's out, she's gone, she didn't make it. So why are we even, after all, they already hosted her position? And the reprimands during the 15-16 school year, that's the only real negative thing on, yeah, about 15-16, that she grieved, the only grievance she's ever filed. And that's pending. So all we want, and we're not asking much, just treat us like you would treat anyone, utilize a little fairness. I think if you utilize a little fairness, that you'll agree that she's not, and she may not have worked as hard as I would have, that, but don't fire her, that she's worthy to try to reprove at a different set. Pam thanks you, so do I.
Thank you. And you have... How much time for rebuttal? One minute for rebuttal.
I think I have this sort of closing, but I just want to read through. You know, counsel uses the word, "She's doing okay, maybe not great, but she's doing okay." How is that doing okay? How in any world are we saying that someone who's gotten eight reprimands, has eight reprimands, and in 15-16 alone, four of those? At the time she's being nonrenewed, she's just failed one growth plan, and she's on the next one. So the proposition that, well, another three months, she'll have a revelation, she hasn't had a revelation in 13-14, she hasn't had a revelation in 14-15, and she hasn't had one in 15-16. And to say that waiting for her revelation outweighs the students' needs, or students' needs, is just ridiculous. We don't, we don't wait for someone to decide to do their job at the expense of students who are in need.
All right, thank you. Board members, are there any questions? All right. Mr. Ortiz, we did not put into the record yet, but there was an agreement, and I just want to put it on the record, to extend the hearing to this date, is that correct? You recall that we waived the education code rule?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And...
Yes.
Let me also...
I remember that, yes.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jefferson, members of this school board, Ms. Jefferson agreed that the law requires, as Mr. Akabam knows, to, the board to give us a hearing within 15 days after the after-yes. And the parties agreed to schedule this hearing tonight. We agreed to that.
All right. And just for the record, because it is 10:22 at this time, does the board have at least until, well, if it takes an hour and 45 minutes, we would be into the next day. I'm assuming that you will permit the board to be able to complete its deliberations tonight or early in the morning, as it may be, before it comes out with its ruling? In other words, would you extend its opportunity to decide this case until June 29th, if necessary?
And, yes, and, 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 I don't have the education code, but I think the board has...
I think so too, but I just wanted to make sure on the record that you weren't objecting. All right, thank you. The board, having heard the evidence, may take any action and enter such order as it deems lawful and appropriate. If we believe that any or all of the reasons given by the administration are supported by a preponderance of the evidence presented at these reasons, and that these reasons are sufficient for nonrenewal, the board may order nonrenewal of the employee's contract. If so, the employment will terminate at the end of the contract term. If the board believes that some action other than nonrenewal is appropriate, the board may order, may so order. This is not a proceeding to fire the employee or break the existing contract, neither is it a criminal proceeding requiring proof beyond a reasonable doubt. Rather, any action must be supported by a preponderance of the evidence, which is a lesser burden of proof. If any of the administration's reasons are established by the preponderance of the evidence, the board may decide not to renew the employee's contract. The board will now deliberate and discuss the evidence presented. Throughout its discussions, the board will consider only the specific reasons for the nonrenewal and the evidence presented at this hearing. The board will not consider rumors or other statements that it may have heard outside this hearing room. Uh, and since there was no objection to the board deliberating in closed session, then the board will now go into closed meeting under Texas Government Code, Sections 551-071 and 551.074. The time is 10:27 PM." Thank you.
We are now back in session at 12:40 AM on June 29, 2016. No action was taken in the closed meeting. I want to thank the attorneys for their presentations and professional conduct during this hearing. Both sides represented their clients zealously. Do I have a motion regarding this case?
President Solent, I bring a motion to non-renew the 2015-26-16 term contract of Pamela Jefferson.
Your second? A motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Dr. Reich. Discussion? If you choose to vote in the affirmative, raise your right hand at this time. All trustees vote in the affirmative. The decision of this board is final and is not subject to rehearing. The employee will receive written notice of our decision within 15 days. The employee has a right to appeal to the Commission of Education for review of the board's action within the timelines established in statute. This hearing is concluded. The time is 12:41 AM. Thank you.